Well, we'll call a meeting to order. Let's please say the flag salute.
Let's do it just to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, go through correspondence. I handed you guys some individual K work and North Central Regional Planning Commission pamphlets there for you. And I noticed, let's go to some of the serious. We got that from FEMA. That was addressed to Alexis, and I guess you were chairman. From FEMA, thirty day engineering models notification, Dear Mrs. Flu, which is Alexis here. This letter is to notify you of the engineering data models that the Department of Homeland Security's FEMA is using in the ongoing flood hazard mapping project in Lincoln County. As discussed during the lower Solomon Celine discovery initial map review in Belay, Minneapolis, on September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, determining where risks may have changed. FEMA's goal is to provide useful, credible data as well as fair process to help you make informed decisions to build a safer and stronger community. These engineering models will form the basis for proposed special flood hazard areas. I don't know if I need to read this whole thing.
I think we've sent our bus driver as our delegate. Does anyone remember that? I believe we sent Mr. Philbrick, didn't we? No, 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 it was the Praiser's office.
Yeah, he was, Truett McQueen.
Yeah, I don't know why I was confusing them.
Truett McQueen.
I think that's what we sent him for at this meeting.
Yeah, because he was, right, because there's a map to it.
Yeah.
Truett, yeah, we should maybe ask him if he's ever heard anything about it.
I'll just...
We can talk about it later.
Is it asking for action?
I don't know if that's...
What's that map look like? Is it that flood planes on or is that just a generic map? Just a generic map.
Please provide us any data that you may have relevant to the project. We would also appreciate if you would provide us with contact information, including email address for any community official staff members or stakeholders who you believe would benefit from receiving updates and information about this project. Please note that your community will have several more opportunities to comment and provide feedback. So, let's, if we can hand that back.
Wonder what flood risk products do we get? Is it just some documents saying where something could flood or whatever? Do you know Alexis, any idea?
I do not, I never...
I do not either. I guess we could talk to Truett. He was going to go to that meeting on if whether it...
Yes.
Because he works at Auto County also. There's the rest of it. Well, we'll proceed on and...
You want to look at that?
No, I don't. Okay, well, move on to the next... We got...
I'll take the Mac.
We have a letter from Broadstroke, which is, I don't know what that is. Well, this is just an advertisement. Bring your business live with promo products. Print, mail, marketing. You do printing stuff, Jim, are we looking at that?
No, I'm throwing that, they're just selling stuff.
It's just an advertiser for...
You have Lincoln County on there.
Yeah, it has county commissioners.
Trash.
Okay, let us move that on. And we'll go to the next piece of mail here from Kansas Blue Cross. Welcome to the family, Lincoln County employees.
Oh, does that have Alexis's name on it?
Huh?
That's Alexis's, sorry.
Is that yours?
Yeah. Those are those cards I called you about.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, okay. That's not part of our stuff then?
No, sorry.
Okay, that's all right.
I should have gave it directly to you.
No, well, no big deal.
You guys get rid of theirs, your evaluation, we'll just copy some.
Then we have, looks like we have a tax abatement here. Tax rule of construction, correction. Ford Chevy cab gray pickup for Mike Cole. There's a bear with it.
I moved to approve tax abatement two thousand nineteen dash seventeen in the amount of two hundred eleven dollars and two cents under Michael Cole.
And I'll second that. We have a motion and a second to approve tax abatement, control number two zero one nine one seven for Mike Cole. Tax ID, we don't need all that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, no opposed. Do I need to sign anything on here?
Yes, on the bottom line, that first page.
First page, bottom line?
Well, not the very bottom, but the one above it.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we'll move on. We have a sales and service from Cummings, Cummins Engines, Wichita, Kansas. For Lincoln Park Manor, Johnson Shale.
Is that backup generator?
Yes, probably the generator. Inspection with fuel sample. Perform inspection test run unit without load for twenty minutes. Batteries will be two years old at next service suggested to replace at this time, at that time. Took fuel sample, advised customer findings, a repair quote will be sent to the customer. Thank you for choosing Cummins and Service.
Why would it need repair?
Right, it's just sitting there.
We just, we literally bought it brand new.
Yeah, no, it hasn't run except for...
And why would you replace the batteries?
Well, they may be sitting there never being run. You know, batteries sitting out in the old tractor, never started, they bet, they go bad quick.
I thought that was the whole point of them doing the twice a year startup and the check.
Yeah, they should, they should charge them.
Because I don't know enough about it to say.
Yeah, well, they should charge them. Well, hopefully if you run it, they got an alternator on there to charge the batteries, hopefully. I don't know either all about it. And this is with six hundred ninety-nine dollars here just as a...
Is that a bill or...?
Yeah, it's a bill, and then they want to, I wonder what's wrong with the engine where it need replaced. Something that would be expensive, I'm sure. I don't know if we're going to approve any of that until we know better.
Well, you don't have to replace the batteries now.
No, the battery, no, but he's talking there. Took fuel sample.
Well, it's preventing maintenance. He ran it without load for twenty minutes.
No, I know about that, Jim. But it says took fuel sample. And then it says a repair quote will be sent.
Yeah. That seems awful high for coming out here, but I suppose that's what you pay.
Oh, yeah, I need that big...
But what is the bill for? Because that's why we have a maintenance agreement, or a...
We should call Jonathan.
We have a...
I'll call Jonathan.
Not insurance, but like a maintenance contract.
You have a contract with him. I'll call Jonathan about this, okay, before we approve anything?
Yeah.
Just see what's going on, how come that's so high? There you go. Look it over. Yeah, I'll call him and ask.
I mean, this, this inspection and fuel sample, I thought that was part of our yearly...
Maintenance, maintenance contract.
Right, because we had asked them to prepare a contract bid so that we could, I think it was five years.
It took twice a year to do it, right? It started after I left and checked it. I'll call him.
Yeah, see, this run, test run, test run the unit, load for twenty minutes, that was supposed to be done.
Okay. I'll call him and find out more about it before we approve this. I'm not against approving it if we need to, but I mean, we need to know, we need to know... I could call him right now, if I wanted to.
Yeah. Let's just ask, because that seems, I don't understand why we would pay.
I don't either, I agree, I agree with you. Did I talk to you, please? Hey Jonathan, it's Randy Lowman here at the commissioners' meeting with Alexis and Jim. Can I put you on, we have a question about a bill about this Cummins engine. Can, you care if I put you on speakerphone so we can discuss this with you? Thank you, I'll kind of put you on speakerphone. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we got a bill here from Cummins Sales Service, Wichita, for an inspection with fuel sample. Perform an inspection, test run unit without load for twenty minutes. Batteries will be two years old and they suggest replacing them next time.
Yes.
It says took a fuel sample, advised customer findings, and then a repair quote will be sent to the customer. So, first of all, I said we got a bill for six hundred ninety-nine dollars. We thought we had a service contract with them that that would be part of not being paid for, is that, or do we...
That is, that was my understanding too.
Well, then we need to contact Cummins and Cummins Engine to find out. Can you call them and find out what the deal is on this?
Yes, I can, because I thought that that yearly inspection was part of the, was part of the service plan that was set up in the beginning of that thing.
Yeah, we thought that too. And also, they said here, a fuel sample, took fuel sample, then advised customer findings. So, it sounds like there was some not good findings there, and then they said they're going to repair quote will be sent. So, have you heard of...
They have, they have to run a fuel sample, it's a fire marshal deal.
Well, that's okay, but why would you need a repair quote?
That I don't know, unless the repair quote is about the batteries.
Oh, okay, maybe.
The repair quote is probably about the batteries, because he was supposed to send me a quote on what those batteries was going to cost, and I haven't seen it yet. So, I was going to, was needing to call them anyway to find out what that was going to entail as far as replacing those batteries. So...
Down at the bottom here, it says, there are additional contract terms on the reverse side of this document, including limitation on warranties and remedies, which are expressly incorporated herein, and which purchase or acknowledges have been read and fully understood, which is all the lawyer talk in the back there that you can never read. Uh, can you just contact them, please, and...
Yes, I will, because I was under the impression from what Greg said, that that inspection that they have to do yearly was involved in that, in that service, the maintenance and service plan that was set up with them.
It is.
Yeah, we, we kind of thought that too. Thank you. Yeah, if you could contact them and maybe get back to us sometime and find out if we, if we have to pay on, we, six hundred ninety-nine dollars here. We thought it's a contract, service contract, handle that for one, and also on the other issue, if it's just the batteries needing replaced too, so, thanks.
Yeah, that, I will find out all of that information from them. I'll see if I can give her, her name is Diane down there at the office in Missouri. I'll give her a call today and see if I can't get through to her, see if I can find out what's going on with that, because I thought it was covered.
Okay, thanks a lot, Jonathan, yeah.
One more thing, if this is a seven hundred dollar quote for batteries, that seems a lot, pretty high to me for batteries. You can buy diesel engine batteries a lot cheaper than that.
Yeah, that's, the, the, the batteries, the batteries shouldn't be much more than, well, there's, those are basically a deep cycle battery, and they would, they would be, they would run around a hundred and seventy apiece.
Okay.
There's only, there's four of them, but, you know, so...
Okay.
All right.
Okay. While you're, while you're still on the phone, I have the agreement here for the maintenance agreement, and it says, every first of December, which I assume that's what this is from?
Yes.
First of December and first of June, an inspection for six hundred and nine dollars. But Dawn, are we paying an annual price, or are we paying that parceled out?
That I'm not positive, but I will find out that when I call them.
Maybe we have a contract with them, but we still have to pay them as we go along.
Well, the problem is, it's not the price that's, we agreed to six hundred nine dollars and sixty cents, so it's a hundred dollars off. And it says, a load bank test will be performed, which is what it said. This says the price quote for annual maintenance on the generator listed to include the following: a full service maintenance with inspection of the generator and switchgear, and inspection of the generator and switchgear. Price includes parts, labor, and travel. Service will be scheduled during normal business hours. Uh, yeah, from what I can tell, maybe we did not, it's two thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-three cents for the, for each year.
Okay.
Oh, oh, fuels, oh, excuse me, one second.
I can't understand why they would be charging it separate.
Do this math, six hundred and nine sixty, and then eighty-nine forty-four.
Well, that's your ninety-nine bucks.
Maybe that, okay. So, then if we didn't, if we're not paying yearly, then that is the right price? But we still want to know what repairs they're talking about.
Right, a fuel sample.
Okay, if we didn't pay the yearly amount, then that is the right number.
I'll, I'll call and get, I'll call and get, get a, get clarity on all that.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Not a big deal.
Yeah, okay, thanks a lot. Bye.
I'm going to put this in the nursing home file.
All right. So, we'll just table that for now.
I watched it get in with their nursing.
Well, we got to pay this bill, I think. We need to give it back to Dawn. We have to sign it here.
Well, nothing will have to be confirmed.
Yeah, I don't know, do we want to store it in there with that, or...
No.
You want to keep it? Yeah, we need, she needs to keep it out here. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, next item from direct supply, Hopper. Now, this is the Hopper, that is this year's winner. Hopper County.
Lincoln Park Manor.
Oh, that's some Hopper.
Floor mounted service sink. Oh, this is what he came to ask about.
Oh, that's that sink, right.
So, originally he came, and it was, what, twelve hundred dollars or something, and this one's six sixty plus tax, yeah.
And we agreed to approve that for the cheaper price.
So, he can just initially?
So, I'll just initially this. This is a, this is called a Hopper here. I don't know why Hopper County is called for Hopper, which is a sink, it's a special sink at the nursing home, and we agreed to it. So, I'll sign that. And we'll move on to Lincoln Council on Aging has given us a...
Actually, Dawn gave us this.
Oh, Dawn did?
It is the three different budgets that were submitted in the summertime.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Gilman, when, when did you come on to the commission?
On July.
July, so then this would have been right around that time, I think.
Yeah, so, okay. Lincoln Council on Aging, twenty twenty budget, twenty-one thousand dollars.
And that's the Lincoln Senior Center.
Senior Center, forty-five thousand, five, ten, and then...
And that's the Sylvan.
Sylvan is...
It's on the back.
There's, uh, thirty thousand dollars. Anyway, so, I guess sometime we're going to have to determine, we have, what, fifty thousand budgeted for... The Council on Aging, I guess, I don't know how to divvy it up. We did last year, I don't know.
You have that on the agenda for March second.
What now?
You have that on the agenda for March second, Dawn.
Oh, okay, yes, right.
Discussion.
Well, let's hold this out.
You want to keep that out, okay.
Yeah.
You can file that, or, okay, uh, that's it, I think, except for, well, these are evaluations. We're going to be here later, right?
There were a couple more things. The Conservation District, I wanted to present that as...
FEMA deal, that's nothing.
Where did I, where did you put that conservation report, financial report? We, we just don't attend this, and someone gave this to me, so I thought we should, I should do it as correspondence. Their January one balance last year was two thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars and thirteen cents. And then at the end of the year, so their new January one balance for this year would be eleven thousand two hundred sixty-one twenty-eight.
Oh, we approved that before, haven't we, earlier here?
Well, we give a line item dollar amount out of our general fund every year, and we had increased it, but it looks like they were able to retain almost ten thousand dollars. I don't know if that's, I know they had an office changeover.
So, we have to approve this budget now?
Well, I'm just, we, they will turn in another budget this year, so...
We have to then approve a distribution.
This is their year end report.
A distribution to them, though, you have to.
That's the one they pass out to the members at the Conservation District Dinner. If you look inside, they got puzzles and stuff to fill out and all that.
And I'm wondering, Dawn, do we, when we budget, do we do a line item for this?
It's an allocation from the general fund.
Okay. Okay, and then I have a, an email from Caitlin Ansel. Dear Lincoln County Commissioners, I would like to be considered for one of the open seats on the hospital board. I feel like, I would feel like I can bring some good ideas on how the hospital could function better and save money. This county needs the, this hospital, and having younger minds on the board could help with coming up with ideas to help the hospital.
Who was that again?
Caitlin Ansel.
It's, I don't know who's, I don't know her, I guess.
Our in-law.
I...
It's Caitlin Street.
Oh, Street, Caitlin Street.
Forgot to turn it on yesterday, sorry about that.
Caitlin, I know Caitlin, I, I know her.
She works there?
I'm pretty sure she does.
Oh, yeah, we can't have that. We already have that. Last board, we had someone working at the hospital and on the board. Maybe we could, maybe we could verify that. Could you verify if she's an employee at all? Either contract, it can't be...
Lincoln Hospital.
Uh-huh, if it's more than, well... I guess, I mean, that has to be, if, if there's employment there or any kind of compensation, that would be considered a conflict of interest, yeah.
Conflict of, big conflict of interest, yeah.
Plus, there's already a relative on the board, so, I mean, but I believe that's one of the positions that's up.
Yeah, Richard Ansel's, put a, re, re, he reviewed, whatever he called it, put in a request also to be considered.
I don't think it's a conflict of interest, though, because neither one will be supportive to the other.
Well, the real conflict of interest would be if there's financial compensation going to the person who also sits on the board.
Yeah, yeah, it's just somebody works here, they can't...
Was going on for years and years and years and years and years.
Anything else?
Um...
I don't see any other correspondents right here except for our evaluations, which we're going to do later.
I have a few more. Mike Summers from API, and this is to you, Randy. There's a lot of this stuff in here, so I'm just going to say, from the president and CEO of API, energy leadership for all Americans, natural gas and oil. Our hope is that Congress cuts through the election year noise. In terms of focus to energy policy, lawmakers must prepare for projected growth in global energy demand with forward-looking policies that support safe natural gas and oil production. That means action on trade, infrastructure, and the environment. Uh, I don't see a call to action or an invite.
What do they want from us?
I don't know. Looks like it might be just more informative. I don't know what API even stands for. And, let's see, Tanner sent, he forwarded his email to the county attorney, attached, thanks for calling. Attached is the latest revision with comments that I have made from, that I have from the RMA. I believe the purple are Annell's comments, and the red text and pink are mine. At the commission meeting a few weeks back, I briefly discussed the commission, and a few comments I wrote on a hard copy. And Dawn, do we need to include the per load, what do you call that, fee, um, what did we call that?
The permit.
Yes, the permits. Does that need to be part of the RMA, or is that something separate?
I would assume that it would be, but...
Well, we discussed that, remember, the per load price?
I mean, I definitely think we should do that.
We were going to raise it, remember? It was, what, twenty-five dollars or something?
What purpose does that fee serve?
We charged them so much when they'd haul.
Yeah, why?
For using our roads.
Well, any...
No, don't they fix the roads up? Don't they put radii in and things like that?
What they, what they deem necessary to change for their own use, they, they will do. But we charge anyone who comes through unless there's a waiver for something.
Why?
Why do we do that?
Yeah.
Because I have to have employees out moving signs, putting signs back up, oversized overweight permits, so when a house moves, we have to move signs.
How about these guys?
Are you going to have to be out there for them?
Don't know exactly. They were working on a utility railway permit, but last week, commission said that they don't have to fill those out.
Some of them equipment, you maybe you have to be out there, because they got some huge cranes that are going to be coming through there. They're oversized, probably.
I don't see a reason not to. That's my opinion.
Well, it seems to me that we're just trying to nickel and diming them to death on something we don't need to do. For all the money they put into this county, why are we sticking them with twenty-five dollars a load or something like that? It seems like that's just an irritant.
Well, as was discussed at the table, the only reason they're even performing this repower project is because they already have grant money allocated and contracted.
I understand that, but what's that, why do they need, why do we need their twenty-five dollars a truck? We're just doing it for whatever reason. I don't know.
I think it was a policy we had before. We actually were going to increase it, remember? We talked about making it a fifty, a hundred.
Still, my question is, why do we do that?
Well, why, why are they here at all? I mean, it's, it's a big rigmarole merry-go-round of tax dollars. I mean, your federal taxes, my federal taxes, everybody's federal taxes are what's paying for this. It's not as if Lincoln County is getting a gift. They're using tax money to do it. It's not even a, it's not even a private investment from the company.
No, but it benefits the county, you're right. It comes, it's a subsidy from federal government, helping, sponsors them. But Lincoln County is benefiting from it by getting a lot of windmill money, and ranchers and farmers get money from the leases. So, it's federal government subsidizing Lincoln County indirectly. I agree with you on that, but that's what we got going, and it's, and we might as well take advantage of it. What do you want to do, not have windmills?
But see, that's, I think it's taking advantage.
No, but I'm, I'm for taking the purpose.
I think it's the taking advantage part, because I don't lie, because they do a lot for the county. And it may or may not ever come to it, but if the word gets out that every time you go into Lincoln County, they're going to charge you for something or other, for whatever reason.
They may not want to come back here, right?
Make, make them see what other...
Well, we haven't started charging people for roads that are destroyed. Dick and, for Otto County, they've got signs up for dirt roads, and if people go down ones, bad traffic, they're charging.
If you catch them.
Well, you can catch them because they get stuck there.
Well, yeah. Well, that's a different issue, but, uh, I don't, I don't know. We, we had a policy before. Did you guys do that back, Dawn, back in originally?
No, that's, that's why I brought it up, was because we did not charge.
Oh, we did not charge, huh?
No, but Ellsworth County does.
That's where, that's how it came up, Ellsworth County.
But you're also talking about, we did not charge when they actually...
Built them.
Yeah, constructed the project.
Like fifteen years ago, whatever.
I guess, I'm going to just repeat what I said before. They did some upgrades or changed some things about some roads to make them, you know, sturdier for their purposes. And then as time went on, they deteriorated back to where we had been maintaining them for average residential traffic. And the public looks at it as, well, why haven't we kept up with what improvements were made? Well, that's not necessarily in our budget.
Right.
Any money that we collect can be allocated to make sure that we do whatever is necessary. Maybe there were culverts that weren't changed out. Maybe there were radiuses that we didn't...
With the amount of money you're going to get, a twenty-five dollar a truck, you couldn't fix one culvert. How many trucks are you going to have? A hundred, twenty-five hundred dollars, how far will that go?
Well, first of all, we talked about a hundred dollars per load, but, I mean...
Now, you're just being putative to it, unless you got a reason to do it.
Well, the only reason we discussed it, because Ellsworth does it, we didn't, that's all.
Washington DC, they do things too, but that doesn't mean we ought to.
Yeah, I understa, I see where you're coming from.
I think it's an irritant. I think it's, it's not anything we need, and it's a opportunity for us to take our hand out and rob them.
Well, then why are we letting them come in here to replace blades that aren't damaged, to send them off to someone else's landfill?
That's not our issue. We don't have to...
It is our issue. It is.
It extends the life of the project.
They are using our throughways and our county provided roads to do a project that is absolutely unnecessary.
We're not, we have no dogging whether it's necessary or not, fight.
We absolutely do. It's my tax money, too.
But it sustains ours windmills for another ten, fifteen years, which benefits the county.
They're not even at the end of their life now.
This isn't the forum to fight whether that's right or wrong.
So, then what, so then why would we not charge a permit for them to come in and do something that's absolutely unnecessary?
We can charge a thousand dollars, but they're going to have to come in and do it, so why don't we go a thousand dollars? Then we got enough money to fix things.
Sure, I'm for it, so...
I think it's ridiculous to charge them at all.
Well, we have it before, I guess. I could see us doing what Ellsworth does, which would be like the twenty-five bucks. Because they're, we'd be like Ellsworth then, and we're kind of like partners in this whole Wind Farm Park, this post-rock park or whatever, Smoky Hill Wind Farm Park, is kind of a combination between Lincoln and Ellsworth County. So, if they do twenty-five a load, I could see us doing that. Then we're kind of consistent with them. I can understand that. But I wouldn't do it anymore.
We have one more piece of correspondence. Is that everything?
We do. I don't have any more, unless it's a valuation, though.
This is from Mr. Holman, who's here, to the Board of County Commissioners. I am inquiring as to whether the commission has had a chance to review my application for the role of emergency manager that I turned in a few weeks ago. I feel that the responsibilities of the emergency manager would mesh well with the current duties of the office manager for Lincoln County Highway Department. I've been able to service, excuse me, I've been able to be of service... I've been able to service, excuse me, I've been able to be of service to our county and I feel that I could be an even greater asset if I were to take on these additional responsibilities. I've compiled some of the documents that FEMA requires in regards to the flooding that occurred in two thousand nineteen, which is normally the duty of an emergency manager. I've begun to familiarize myself with the equipment available in the county and I'm gaining knowledge daily of our county's road system. As a result, I feel that I've had interactions with some of the duties that are associated with this position. I expect that I will need additional training in order to be proficient in this role, and I look forward to the challenge if I am given the opportunity. I've spoken with Director McKay about adding responsibilities of emergency manager to my current workload, and I have his permission to pursue this position. I will make every effort to satisfy the needs of this new role without sacrificing my performance in my current role. I'm willing to learn, ready to listen and eager to demonstrate my value. Thank you very much for your time reviewing this correspondence. I'm grateful for the service you provide to Lincoln County. Yours truly, Caleb Holman. Does that mean that you filled out an application for the emergency manager position?
If, how would you, uh, if we would consider this, how would you, would you still be working at the highway department as a office manager too?
The logistics of it, I was kinda thinking we'd have to figure out as we go. Um, as of right now, uh, I got plenty on my plate, but I think I could add more. Uh, daily, we're streamlining things. Uh, things that usually took me two or three days to do are now taking me half day on Friday and a half day on Monday, so there's time that I have available.
You think you could do that job in your highway department, uh, office manager job, both?
I believe so.
Have you, are you familiar with the fifty-nine dash two dash two responsibilities, this document?
No, sir.
I think you better read it, because I believe you're gonna find out eventually that this is gonna be a full-time job. Here's two pieces of, facebooks you probably wanna look at. And you're gonna find out that it's far more involved in that than, than you really think and you really wanna put in.
Okay, I need, I, I'd like to interject that we, this exact commission cut it from a full-time job to a part-time job.
Yes, we did. And as a result of my work and looking next door and doing some studies, we made a mistake doing that, I believe.
Then how, then answer me this, how do counties Ellsworth and Russell share?
I don't know. Ellsworth ought to come up here and share with us, since we're gonna charge the same thing they do, so we have a companionship with Ellsworth and they'll take it over. I read this stuff and I looked it in there and I looked at all the plans that he says that need to be updated and verified and some other stuff already. And I don't believe that you can do that, it's a part-time deal. I was informed when we did that.
Have you, I, I can pull out the time cards right now, if you'd like to see what was happening with the last emergency.
Have you read this? Fifty-six two dash two, read what this is.
I've read, I've read the entire statute.
I got a whole big book.
Because it's a completely state, it's actually a federally mandated position that the state then analyzes for you to not have. And we will just go to the time cards, so I can show you what the last emergency manager was doing with his time. And I'll remind you that right now, the head of the health department is performing the paperwork function.
I bet the head of the health department can't tell you what the barred tornado plan is.
Okay, well, knowledge, knowledge is one thing, time is another.
Knowledge is, the whole thing is, you all have to be an operator. When something happens, you have to be able to tell people what needs to be coordinated and how to do it.
Oh, absolutely, and that's.
And you have to keep those plans up ready. You gotta read the plan, it's gonna take you two days to read the plan in there.
I'm not disputing, I'm not disputing, well, I'm not disputing any of that, you can read it at home.
But how, can you write one?
So here is eighteen, all of two thousand and eighteen. And, let's see, you're supposed, there's supposed to be a notation of what you actually performed as a function on the day, so I'll read that, and here's one month. Starting on December twenty-seventh, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, nothing, thirtieth and thirty-first, off. First off, second of January, Phelps House Fire, which is fine, someone went to, he went to the fire, I suppose. Third, I M T Working Group, fourth, I M T Working Group, so that was a seminar. The fifth, going to the school, sixth, going to the school, seventh, off, eighth, clinic at three o'clock. Ninth, nothing, tenth, Topeka, eleventh, Topeka, twelfth, work comp. Thirteenth, off, fourteenth, off, fifteenth, Martin Luther King Day, off. Sixteenth, nothing, seventeenth, nothing, eighteenth, nothing, nineteenth, H C C meeting in Salina. Twentieth, off, twenty-first, off, twenty-second, nothing, twenty-third, meeting Lions, I W T. Twenty-fourth, nothing, twenty-fifth, Heron Bucket, nine o'clock. Now that's an entire month, with about three meetings.
No, I'm telling you that we weren't, we weren't supervising them, were we? Because he was not doing the things that are mandated to be done in fifty-six two dash two and.
Well, here's another month, with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven,
You're just telling us that he didn't do anything.
Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen days in the next month of nothing.
Agreed, that means the county commissions are not supervising him as they're supposed to do.
Same thing, next month, or, you know, a, a, a meeting on one day, another meeting on another day, out of town for two days. I mean, I, I highly recommend that you look at this year's.
That doesn't do me any good, that says we didn't do our job.
You were trying to justify it as a full-time position.
No, I'm trying to take what the state says that we have to do, right here specifically.
Then how did we function with this going on for multiple years?
You didn't function with it, you didn't.
But Jim, you, you, how do you know you need a full-time person to do this?
You read what you gotta do and you tell me how, what time.
It's knowledge-based, yes, having knowledge is different than spending physical time.
And writing and preparing and working with other counties, that's all in there and laid out in great detail on what you have to do.
Caleb, have you, have you read some document like this?
Uh, no, I haven't seen it.
So you would, do you understand what your duties would be if you would be, like, want, pursue this job? Like Jim's stating, there's quite a, there's more than maybe we did in the past, and, uh.
Actually, I think all the paperwork was up to date in the past, because the paperwork is one thing, a few hours here and a few hours there. Having the knowledge to do something is completely different than taking an entire month of June and being off seven days and going to three meetings.
You guys didn't do your job, we don't care if you don't do your job. We didn't get the job done. He was not doing the job he was supposed to do.
Where? Where are you verifying that?
Cause you're on your timesheet. You're not doing the things in here it says you have to do.
Was the plan not updated?
There's a whole lot more updating the plan. I haven't looked at those plans to see if they're updated or not, but I'd certainly be happy to.
Were the credentials not met?
I don't know.
Yeah, they were. Credentials were met, the credentials that you have to personally hold, which you have two years to obtain after you begin the position.
Those credentials are listed, and I don't know what he had, but I've got some of these myself, but I'm not gonna be the emergency management. Well, it's, it's all in here, I'm not gonna, but you need to look at that.
Well, I, I would not be against it if you can comply with everything Jim's saying we need to do. Maybe we weren't doing in the past, uh, doing what we should do, I don't know, Alexis, you may, you're saying all he needs, running to be a certified.
I don't, I don't personally believe that the last emergency manager was not performing the functions. What was asked of the last position was to add more responsibilities, which was not desired, even though a year's worth of time cards show days and months worth of empty time.
When is the last time that the county commissioner participated in a county emergency exercise?
Commissioners, who knows?
Commissioners.
What, what, did you ever do it? Not, I don't, not, probably.
When was the last time, any, well, we don't have anybody in here. I've participated more than, than the commissioners and most of your department heads already.
And what are you suggesting, that's a full-time job?
I am suggesting that we're not doing our job. We need to look at what the responsibilities are and make sure they're covered, and we're not doing that now. There's responsibilities for meetings, there's responsibilities for county, uh, emergency action exercises.
Okay, so, our director of our highway department is participating in the meetings currently, so is our health department, the L A P C meetings.
What meetings?
Local emergency planning.
Well, it's an emergency plan.
Have you been to the districts that you're required to go to? How about the state and you? That's right.
I'm, I'm the, you, the commission.
We appointed him.
Lincoln County's, voting member of the Homeland, or Central Kansas Homeland Security Council.
Which can be anybody.
Yep.
Well, I think we have a question.
Mainly emergency management and sheriff's office people there. I'm the only highway department person that's been at the meetings so far.
Well, from Lincoln County, right now, I've attended one meeting, they're, they've been happening during commission meetings. We have our health department head and we have our highway department head, and I think that's it. Mister Estrel is on that board. And then, last time we had a, we had, when I was there, the emergency manager from Ottawa County was there. Who I specifically asked questions of during the meeting as to what the function is. None of it had any physical duties on site when that, when anything is going on. It's all administrative logistics. So that could be done from literally anywhere, and the knowledge base that you have to have can be gained in any given time according to the capacity of the person who wants to learn. It's not something that you have to spend, we're not gonna pay someone to sit and be quote-unquote learning for the next two years. You get your credentials and you perform the function. The basic setup for the paperwork is already there, that's been passed down federally. It's not, it's not reinventing the wheel for anyone. I'd like to know how Ellsworth and Russell can share a person, but Lincoln County needs a full-time position that can be verified as having sixteen hours a month. Out, out west, there are emergen- E M, E M S department heads who also co-function, well, I know of one who co-function as the emergency. There are other department heads who hold those responsibilities. I think there was a highway department supervisor, supervisor that in, even in our region, that had done it at one time. I'm not sure when this became a full-time office job, but we already cut that budget. If you're planning on taxing everybody to sustain that budget, I think there should be more verification of hours of work then.
Well, I think there's an issue on what Jim's pointing out. How much do you actually have to do? Is that what you're required to do and if you comply, and I think we have, Jim's pointing out that we need here, that we need to have to do more than we had done. And you, I think Alexis, you're stating, is that all we need to be is have a certified individual, right?
Well, you, to, like I said, again, you have to have the knowledge base. That doesn't equal hours of time. Knowledge is different than time.
Well, well, I think we've got a confusion factor, just what that job entails exactly. Jim's pointed out that it's pretty more complicated than we thought in the past, based on that document, and we're saying maybe, what, what, I wonder, do we, can we contact, I guess you contacted those guys before in Topeka. What do we have to do to comply, to be, to comply as for a county that we're credible doing our job?
This is pretty specific about it.
Because we wanna be compliant, so we don't get reprimanded one way or another, that's bottom line, I think. Now, so maybe one emergency manager in one county does more than one in another county, that's what we're talking about here, isn't it? You know, and how involved are those one versus in another county, and I think that's not consistent, the way it sounds here. I don't know.
Quarterly activity reports shall be provided and so forth. We're at least two quarterly reports behind right now.
I think Whiton has been doing those.
How, how could she possibly fit that in? Well, I think we need to just continue that discussion at a later date, we can move on with our agenda, but.
Well, then we move on and, uh, can, Jim, can Caleb look at this?
Yeah, that's what.
Caleb, why don't you look at this information and see, find, point to him, Jim, what do you think he would need to?
You can read it all, but fifty-six two dash two is specific, the standards for local disaster agencies. Each local district shall establish and provide and so forth. And then this is the state handbook, take both of those.
And review that and, and see if you could perform all them functions, and also the highway department. Now, maybe it's too much, for one person to do both.
Absolutely.
Okay, but you can at least give us your opinion on it, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to you guys, Brendan and Caleb. Caleb, you think now that you've done more of your, uh, office manager duties, that you're getting more efficient, more productive at it, so actually you're getting, needing less time, where you could almost do this?
I think so. I, I, I think I need more knowledge, absolutely, and I need training.
Yeah, we have, there's, there's a lot of classes and training. David was going with that because of recertification, you gotta cooperate.
That's very specific on the training you need. By title number and where you get it, how much it is.
Okay.
There, it's all in there.
Okay.
You're gonna, you got a lot of schooling ahead of you.
Well, that's, and also if, as long as you would perform your duties as, as office manager at the highway department, that's the most important thing right now, that's your job right now, okay?
Yeah, okay.
But, well, you could evaluate that, then maybe we'll discuss it later, okay?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Very good. Brendan?
First thing, notice an award for Kirk and Michael, uh, they need that max signed by you, Randy, the chair, for the Tuck Point project.
Oh, okay. Lincoln County Stone Bid Repair Contract.
Is that where they get posted?
Yeah, you're notified that your bid date for the above contract has been considered, you are the successful bidder. This is, you wrote this up, huh, Brendan?
No, Kirk and Michael did, so they can, they need chair signature on it, so that way it can be turned in.
The bidder awarded the contract for the total base bid and the total add all in, number one. The contract price, uh, your contract is one hundred twenty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty cents. Five copies of pros, proposed contract documents accompany this notice of award. One set of drawings will be delivered separately. You must comply with the following conditions, within fifteen days, deliver to the owner of five fully executed counterparts of the contract, deliver. If the executed contract documents the contract, the security bonds as specified in the instructions to bidders, other conditions precedent. So, uh, you wanna review that, Jim too, before?
We already approved.
We approved it, yeah. I just wanted, you wanna review the contract though? I mean, it's, I agree, we approved it, not any.
So the, the, we chose two of the four, so for one hundred twenty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-six, maybe.
Two of them, step four, yeah.
And you're gonna put local help on fixing the rest of the concrete, yeah, that kinda stuff, yeah.
Okay, then I'll, I'll sign this, let's find, okay?
Sign that, here's some photos. There's only one copy. So that is on coal, by the eightieth, where the Kinder Morgan pipelines run through. Our roadway. Kinder Morgan, the gas company. So I guess, I, I met with him last Thursday. He, I guess, been an ongoing issue for the last couple of years, him and Michael been talking back and forth, and I had talked with him when I came into office. He came out on site and those are the pictures from recent visit. The road is closed, but someone had driven over our barricades again, so we had set barricades back up again. He was very concerned that somebody had gone through there because.
Where is this on coal?
Right by eightieth.
Why, why did we close it?
Because the gas lines are too, no, the gas lines are too close to surface.
Oh, because of where that?
So.
Is that because our road is lower now, or?
It's been a washout for at least two years, it's been known, I guess. I talked with him Thursday, he's gonna talk to his supervisor and see if they have any concrete pads. Because, he said if a semi truck went through there and went through, over there wrong with as thin as it is right now, there's seven hundred pounds of line, pressure in that line, it would, it would do a lot of damage.
Where is that?
So what are they gonna do?
They were gonna put concrete pads down, see if they have concrete, or we pour concrete slab.
Like to encase it?
Over the top of it, so that way we would have a warning marker when we knew we were getting close to it again, as a roadie roads, and then we would put, come back and put material on top of it.
Is that gravel, or just dirt?
I believe it is a dirt road.
Where's that, coal, where at?
Near eightieth.
Oh, way southwest part of the county.
Right, right where my fingertip is.
Okay.
You can see it on that one, well, here, shows it right here, these lines right here, the Kinder Morgan lines.
Well, it might have been at one time, it was out.
And there's the gas.
Oh, it goes, okay.
Last spring, when we had all that floodwater, it really.
Well, it's been known for two years. He said that him and Michael have been working on it. Michael was trying to get material from the southern landowner. I've spoken with people that rent that already, that's an outstaged or overseas owner.
So what are you gonna do now?
The idea would be to cap it with concrete or the concrete pads like they have, so that way we'd have a warning marker twenty, thirty years from now. If it got shallow again, before a grader or someone hit that pipeline. But the thing is, people have been driving through our barricades there again. So I, we talked to your, members of your districts and they're asking about it, please tell them not to go through our barricades there.
What does it say, or is it just, what did you put up for a barricade?
Just road close signs.
You might wanna put gas line exposed or something, well, I know you don't wanna ride all that extra stuff though.
So it's been closed for two years?
It's been known for two years. I don't know how long it's been closed for.
It was closed already when you came. It was closed already when you came?
And someone had gone through the barricades once already.
Is this the one where it comes to, a little further to the west, it comes to a big intersection? Like a really wide T?
Kind of, yes, I believe so.
And then down the hill is really rocky?
Yes.
I didn't realize, I've never gone the other way on that. It's, I mean, I, you can't really travel it in a little vehicle, so. I didn't even realize that was closed.
Yeah, so he's gonna talk with their supervisor out there to see if they had, years past, they had big concrete pads that they're planting Iowa. They laid down over it. It'd basically be used as a marker for what we know we're getting shallow again. But the distance is, that's the distance of the pipe, and that's not even measuring where it's been, he rode it out. So there's more than likely exposed pipeline. The one is sixteen inches, and as you can see, that's not measuring in the gully of it. He didn't take a measurement there. But that's why, right there is sixteen inches of the pipeline, so.
Down in the ditch, huh?
No, not in the ditch.
That gas roll.
It, it goes, see the dark line at an angle? It, it crosses the road.
But I'm just saying.
No, I'm, he measured everything except for here, not these washouts or this ditch. So sixteen inches.
Is it exposed in the washout?
I didn't feel like digging with a shovel when I went through there.
Guessing, just common sense, what do you think? Think of the foot deep or two feet or five?
I recommend not going by, about six hundred feet of that.
Well, then if you're, the road does probably four feet above it, so you're safe.
No. That's saying, this is sixteen inches right here. This down here.
Well, you should be able to see it if it's sixteen inches, 'cause that ditch is sixteen.
If you wanted to dig far enough, you probably could.
Take a shovel, pound the shovel on our gas pipeline.
No, but if your ditch is, how much, that ditch is three foot lower than the road, probably, right? I know, but how come you can't see, the washout's a foot deeper than that road, right?
That pipeline is basically exposed.
I'm just saying, the road is at least a lot higher than that washout, over that there, over.
So that's why you included these measurements. So the road is thirty inches and twenty-seven inches above the gas line, which is too shallow. And twenty-nine inches, twenty-one inches.
How far it should be above the gas line?
Talking with him, he thought closer to four feet, but he's gonna get exact from their engineers, his supervisor.
No, they're gonna put the concrete pad down and then you'll.
Cover it with material, get material from somewhere.
Move the road, yeah.
Okay. Well, you could just put up your barricade and say dangerous, pipeline exposed or something. Maybe then they'll realize they shouldn't be driving over it. They probably don't know that pipeline's an issue, that, that you're just, they just see the road saying, why are you walking it off, you know? That's what they're thinking.
And then met with, talked with Mr. Bell, I think coal already purchased. Spoke with Tanner, took pictures for Tanner. It looks like it will work for the two fortieth.
Okay.
We'll just do some more design work on it.
Is he gonna cooperate then on the other bridge with you too?
I think we'll have to see after we get this one.
Okay, good, good. I had a, one person requesting, uh, over on one fiftieth and Brom. Which is Brom's only like one mile or two miles over there. It's like a half mile north of Bison. Uh, he's a bus driver and there's one child back in there on Brom, west of Brom, west of one fiftieth going west on Brom. That had not been graded, but I know it's probably not that high of a priority, that's 'cause it's small. But there's children back in there and he couldn't hardly get the bus in there. If he could do that, Brom, mile west and then it veers to the north. About a, at one fortieth, I think, uh, about a half mile then goes again. There's Mr. Peter, there's some Petersons live over there and have a child, and he couldn't hardly get the bus in there because of all the bad weather. But otherwise, he thanked you guys, doing a good job, whatever. So if you can sometime grade that Brom road, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, and the Spillman Creek project, I should receive the draft from Kirk and Michael, just to review it. For this, sometime this week, after review it, everything looks all right. We'll send it off to Siren Star so their engineers can take a look at it and basically get started on their end of getting the proposal written up for us. Allow us to go over the top and this spring we should be able to start moving that. Then guardrails over at Wilson Lake, are we looking at? We have markers right there where the landslide was, reflective markers. Do you want cable ones or conventional style guardrails? Whatever we.
No, you, you think markers are good enough just so they know not to drive off that cliff? It's more of a liability issue for us than safety. I don't know. What do you guys think, Lexis?
What, do, do you have any kind of cost estimate?
Depend on what kind you want. I mean, cable is your cheapest.
If you have big guardrails.
The way I see it is if someone's barreling down the hill, nothing's gonna stop them. But if someone was unfamiliar and was too close to the edge, you could definitely curb their angle.
If you have reflectives at night, you can see them.
That's not a high traffic, that's just local indigenous.
Just that one, Mr. Enfield's about the only guy gonna drive back there 'cause his house is back there.
There's two other houses, I think, along that spot as well.
I think you go with reflector signs.
I think reflector signs too.
Nobody gonna be going back there.
Okay, that's what we have them currently. We currently have reflectors.
And I think that's, because that shows them.
I think this discussion came from a prior commission creating an agreement that said they would do guardrails and something else.
Signage, but back in the nineties.
That never happened.
Well, in this place, I don't see how much traffic again that needs it. I mean. Anybody can, any crazy, you can say, well, drive crazy, you're gonna drive off anywhere, down any cliff. So you can't prevent stupidity.
What do we have, the plastic, with the square, like the rectangle at the top?
OM three markers, yes.
What do they call?
OM three, object marker, classification three. Or a lot of people here call them carcinites, 'cause it's made out of a plastic carcinite material. It's nice when they get hit, they don't break.
Not bad, yeah.
So just leave reflectors?
Well, I think so. What do you think, Drew?
A reflective work for me.
Yeah, because not too much traffic and it's common sense. The only time that people know not to drive off there is in the night, maybe. If somebody is not familiar with that, then those reflectors, tell them, don't drive over here. So, that's my opinion. I don't know, Lexis, you out there, no? What?
I'm sorry, is there a dead end marking that?
No, there's not.
That I'm working.
Because the only sign that was there had been the private drive.
driveway, Keith Al.
That I don't think we put up, and that was it.
Yeah, I think that's good. Have you been out there? Is there grass coming up?
Not yet.
I talked to Mr. Will Bean, he thinks it should be starting to come with all the rain we had and the warmth up here.
When I was out there just a little bit ago, it was not last week, Wednesday, uh, what, Tuesday?
It's winter, yeah. Hopefully in a month or so it'll come out.
Then, last couple of things I had were water meters for, we, our best for shop, I get, we also get Denmark's Fire Department water meter. Do we pay for that in the highway department? Don, you're aware of?
No.
Okay, we just get the meter.
Pays, you just get the meter reading.
Okay, yeah.
The other thing I think we need to discuss, if I may interject, um, we are using a highway department employee to haul trash to Salina. Are we gonna continue that? Right now, you're billing for that person's hours.
Yes, ma'am, and, uh, equipment usage also.
And that was another confusing thing. I believe the history is the highway department and the landfill split the cost of the semi that pulls the trailer.
I believe so.
So how are we billing that? Just?
Supposed to be just mileage.
Mileage? So, so every, so that's once a week?
Twice.
Twice a week?
Two times a week.
And how many hours is that?
Usually three and a half to four and a half, um.
Twice a week?
Yeah.
So the full day a week.
A full day, a full person is gone.
Typically, two hundred and forty miles on the vehicle, whatever it is.
I guess I'm just a little bit concerned as to, you know, we, we have this concept that the landfill makes money. But we're really gouging our highway department to make sure that things happen there. And I'm not sure why, if it's not spraying season, why the landfill isn't hauling its own once or twice, I guess, twice a week. It's currently always twice a week?
Yes, unless it's like a holiday week, yeah.
You mean why, uh, Kerry or Dan couldn't haul it instead of the highway department?
Well, it's Kerry's department.
Yeah.
I mean, I thought.
That's probably the way they would set it up way back when.
We also have other equipment that is left at the landfill for them to use that we pay the repair costs on.
Which is?
A dozer, Komatsu dozer, and then a crawler loader and a backhoe tractor.
The backhoe is theirs.
Okay.
They have one backhoe.
One of the, I think the dozer is theirs, and I think actually you guys use a piece of equipment that is theirs.
We use, we use the Case nine seventy tractor. But we got the bill for the Komatsu dozer, 'cause they called me asking for permission to do repairs on it.
Who did the repairs?
Uh, Berry Tractor, I believe.
On site, or they had to take it somewhere?
On site. It was exhausted, rusted out, seat repaired.
Is that that old piece of equipment or the newer one?
That's the newer one.
I think you guys own the newer one.
Okay, the old one, there's a nine seventy, there's a nineteen seventy-seven tracked loader out there. It's the one that had a new undercarriage put on it a few years ago, no cab on it, no enclosed cab, got roller protection. The one that sits up on the hill by the CD pit, and then there's the Komatsu dozer that's, I think, uh, twelve or fifteen? I don't have it in front of me, just to see it.
I think the dozer is yours, but I think there's a piece of equipment that you guys use all the time that the landfill never sees.
The nine seventy case tractor that been utilized to pull our peg roller and sheep's foot.
That was purchased by the landfill, is that what you're saying, Don?
So you, you're using some of their?
Yeah, that's just our, 'cause we also send.
That isn't as much my concern as taking one person away from, what we've alr, we've already said, well, we can't do Monday through Thursday, Tuesday through Friday shift, 'cause we don't have enough people at the same time. Now we know that one person is gone half a day, twice a week, to haul garbage, so I'm wondering.
Dan or Kerry could do that. Do they have CDLs? They'd, they'd have to drive your guys' trucks, huh?
Well, the truck that they've been using is co-owned, because the highway department footed half of the bill and the landfill paid half when they purchased it, I believe.
Yeah, and we, we have, we put one of our tractors up there for it. So it's, when my guys have to go, they don't have to try and hook up. It's already, should already be hooked up and ready to go.
So they're not even getting to use the truck that they paid for?
This is just in the past week that we hooked the truck up to. We normally are using the newest truck to haul the trash.
Which is what the purpose of it was?
Yes.
And that's what they paid for. And then the highway department wanted to be able to utilize it to haul gravel.
And so we just took one of the extra tractor, the third tractor we have, since I don't have an operator for it, and hooked it up so they wouldn't have to try and hook up. Spend the time hooking and then unhooking it. I could get my operator back to doing, work for the highway department faster that way.
Don't we just have one person at the landfill on Saturdays?
James Miller.
So I, I'd kinda like to see the records of how many loads are coming in, like, on average during a day. Because if we have the same amount of loads coming in on a Saturday with one person, then to me, it doesn't make sense, unless it's spraying season, why we need two people for the same amount of loads coming in Monday through Friday, especially if they're not gonna drive their own trash. If the highway department, if the landfill is not going to drive its own trash to Salina. I'd like to request that. Can we request that as a commission to see the records? Don, do you want that in motion?
I'm assuming you guys are gonna contact the department head and ask him what it is that you want.
Call him up, tell him we'd like to have your load.
How, how often does he turn that in? Or did they just keep it?
They keep it?
Okay, oh, yes.
I mean, he gets it to bill out.
No, if they have it, I will just ask, ask them for it. I'll just write a quick email here. Does, do you understand what I'm asking? If, if we have one person on Saturdays and they do ten loads, and then the average is Monday through Friday, ten loads, why do we need two people there all winter and they can't haul? And, you know, maybe the highway department, of course, you guys should be busy in the summer too.
Maybe you should look at loads, maybe you should look at tonnage. What kind of tonnage is coming in? Because you have to deal with a lot more tonnage. Like, he's, they're getting all of the city trash throughout the week that they're having to manhandle. So even though it may, may, maybe three or four farmers come in, you still have a big truck that's dumping onto the floor that they have to handle.
And how many people can ride in the loader to push it off the edge into the trailer?
Right, just one. But you'd wanna look at the tonnage, but somebody has to be there to run the scale while they're doing that. You can't have somebody running the equipment by themselves.
Does matter how many loads are coming in in a day?
Well, I would ask both though.
Okay.
Because your weekend people are just your people that are working on the weekends. They're not your contractors, you know?
I guess I'm just, you know, if you have this huge load that you need to push off, you either don't push it and you run the scale, or you push it and you ask the person to wait on the scale until you get out. I mean, I, I would think that would be.
For safety wise, they never run the piece of equipment without another employee being present, is what they're supposed to be doing.
So then how does someone do it on Saturdays?
Well, I don't think he's doing that. I don't think he's pushing trash on Saturdays.
Push the trash inside of it.
And packing it.
So what time do you, does your highway department employee leave to haul trash?
Around ten o'clock, we normally get a call saying trash is ready.
So if there was stuff piled up from the day before between eight-thirty starting and ten o'clock, there could be two people there to push whatever was left from yesterday.
What days do you haul?
Usually Mondays and Thursdays.
Monday and Thursday, okay.
Don, wasn't it you that told me when Mr. Jackson was hired that he was to be hauling his own trash? Yes, okay.
What, uh, does, you just take your truck out there, or it's already to load up?
This past time we have a truck.
And your driver goes out there then and hauls it to Salina?
Yeah, bring it back.
Do you know if Kerry and, uh, Dan have CDLs to drive some of this?
Kerry has a CDL.
Well, Kerry could do it then.
I'm not answering that question.
No, I mean, he's.
That's a loaded question directed towards me. That's not fair.
No, I'm not. I didn't mean that. I didn't mean, I'm just saying he has, he could do it if, because he has a CDL, that's what I meant.
That's why I'm, yeah, that's why I'm acquiring.
In a regular week, then Dan and James was out there. Anyway, Dan's there, so I could agree with that. I mean, then you wouldn't have to have any one of your employees do that twice a week.
Okay.
But I don't know, we need to talk and figure it out.
So on the equipment list that I had given you, oh, three, four weeks ago now, there's some things that were marked landfill. I should just erase those off of my list, correct?
If, if she's telling you that, because, because I don't know, she would know.
What she did then I have on the side for you. It's not a direct question, but it's, things gonna come up. Stanley Walker, uh, was complaining to somebody, not to me, and it was forwarded to me that you borrowed some of his dirt and he wants his dirt back. And I figured if you borrowed his dirt, it probably wasn't his dirt, 'cause it'd be on county property, 'cause you don't go off county property to get dirt. So when he comes in, I just give him the alert that Stanley must come in and that complaint.
Okay.
I have no further details, just one of those things.
Don, the transfer station email's not on the website that I can find. And it's not coming up for me.
Are you typing in Kerry Jackson?
No, oh, by name. I was trying department.
Anything else? Brendan, go ahead.
Not that I can think of. We pretty much covered all of it.
Hopefully it will.
Next Monday I'll have an updated equipment list. Have any of you finished your maps yet that I gave on Monday to draw them? Okay.
Uh, sorry, did you expect them to?
Well, uh, so I can get a plan together for the next five years that we want.
What do you want specifically? Like a primary road map?
Whatever road you think is important.
The most one, the primary, secondary, first, second, third.
I sent you the.
You sent me a.
Okay, so that notates the gravel roads that are.
Well, I know, I know most of the mail roads and bus roads.
Major, major collectors and minor collectors, but what he needs, in addition to that, which we are all responsible for our own district, to notate where there are problem areas or where you know there's more traffic than maybe what, um, is on the map.
Specific areas I need, where there's more population at that.
Where it's gonna see more usage in.
Or where you know it's been down to below the base, the road, the base of the road is gone.
I know quite a bit of that in my district, 'cause I'm a mail carrier and I'm pretty aware of what needs to be fixed.
So that way I can put together.
Yeah, a plan.
A appropriate plan for the next few years.
Yeah, I'll try to get that for you next week, my, my part of it.
So I've got fifty-four days left, or fifty-three days left, correct?
For what?
To turn a plan in for Jim.
Oh, for Jim.
I was given sixty day deadline, so.
Oh, I think we can stay on that.
No, I don't think so.
I think you need to keep on top of them, because they'll never do it if you don't.
Hey, I have worked on mine and given you some of my numbers, so I'm not taking responsibility for everyone.
I, I know, I'm, I've worked on mine this week, sorry, I didn't, I didn't know it was mandatory.
We'll start the sixty day time period, we'll start the sixty days when you get it ma- back to me, otherwise.
That was a mandatory.
I mean, I could make a plan, but it's not gonna be worth, it's not gonna be worth it because I need good information.
Randy doesn't let him mark apparently.
Depending on, like, sign depending on what.
We've got markers at the office, you can come by, I've got spare maps and color.
Yeah, this is more like a creativity session.
No, I, I'd do it, no, I, I, I didn't know your deadline here, that's fine.
Well, we'll start the sixty days after I can receive the three.
I'll get to it. You want that big map marked up the way you give it?
Well, I made it big so it's easy to see and read.
Well, yeah, that's.
This one here, where it doesn't have street lanes on it.
And I like it, it's great, because it really shows houses and cricks and little roads, no, it's excellent, I like it.
Correct.
So you do just like this at home, you just sit on the wall, and then get your marker out and just start.
Yeah. There you go.
Go with town.
Right, where the mail, when I was mailman, I'll tell you exactly where those are terrible. Need to fix that.
Well, that's the hope, but, so I, I could put a, I can put a plan together, but it's not, it's not gonna be representative of what.
No, it's.
They, they.
That's good.
So in order to make an accurate plan, I need that information.
You have anything else?
Yep, uh, last week, uh, you mentioned possibly bringing some summaries in, so I made copies of what I was thinking, just for an example, um, kind of a starting point. These would be really easy for me to do, as I'm doing time cards, when I noticed there's larger projects going on with the crews. Um, the first one on top is, uh, a report I can generate by the mile, so this, uh, very top one is eight point five eighteen. This would be some material, um, John and Kenny laid down on the fifteenth. And it gives, uh, the equipment, the labor cost, equipment they used, um, how much it costs to use that equipment, and then a total down at the bottom corner.
So where's the location?
Yuma right off fourteen, so.
Do you just know that?
Yar, Yarro Lane.
So it's eight point five.
Oh, you have your own.
So, these, basically if you look at our roads, just flip flop the alphabet.
Okay.
A is up here, C is down here, and then eighteen, so you're at a hundred and eightieth.
Okay.
So right there on Yarro, so eight point five.
Is half between half and eighteen.
Half between Yuma, yeah.
Gotcha.
Oh, so it's up there at eighty, alright.
And I can probably notate on these two.
No, that's okay, I can figure that out, I just didn't realize that you.
Well, it's kind of for.
I'd heard you had a different coding system, but I'd never really known.
It's flip flop from street, basically.
Okay, A through Z, and then every point five is where something.
A half mile.
If it's simple for you to add something, I think it'd be handy for us, for me.
Absolutely.
Just, let's just say street, I guess, like, one fortieth and, um, L or what, not L, but say Elk and one fortieth.
Okay.
That way we got a ballpark, you know, where to look, something like that, if it's handy.
Yes, sir, yeah, no problem.
Yeah, you could, that way, 'cause I know your A five one eight's good for you guys, but I won't know, no, I kinda do, but not with, but now you show, yeah, A to Z then.
The one behind it is just the road that connects to it on Yarro Lane also, and then on the very back page is.
So that was all done in one day, about, just under two thousand dollars worth of work, did that?
Yes, yep.
Okay, and that was hauling out of?
Three men are working on that, yeah, so.
Where did that, where did that material come from?
That came from a mix of.
That was some of the mix you were trying, okay.
So the mixed price probably isn't the most accurate, because we'd not have to update, update it in our system.
Well, just a rough estimate though, and then, now will you ask them for some feedback to see how that works there?
And then on the very back page is, uh, so these are by the mile, and to do this back page would take, um, dozens of sheets of paper, because it would be by the mile.
Yeah, we don't.
And so what I did is I just exported it to like a Word document, and it would be the men who worked on it, uh, the time they spent, if they used equipment, and then down at the bottom corner in that box is the totals of each column, and then the total cost at the very end. Um, and this would have been on the Barnard Highway heading east out of Barnard.
Or blacktop, right, or whatever that chipsy on.
And this is the one I didn't give to you, because it is just the eight point five eighteens, and there's really no information on here, this is the report I get if I, like, to me it makes total sense, like, I can read and understand it, but.
But this is what you can generate just with.
Yep, simply and.
If you would give us a summary like this, that's fine, I don't need all the specific details, I'm sure you got a lot of data.
Okay. Yes.
We don't need all of that, I don't, maybe Lexis wants to, you know.
No, no, I think this is great, I mean, this is just to give us an idea.
Yeah. Yeah, a summary of what you're doing, how much it costs, and that you had rock and it cost so much, and you had a grader driver and it cost so much, and who they were. Then we got an idea of what's going on, what projects you got going on, and we know what it costs, that's helped us out, kinda get an idea, that's all.
And I think, like he said, when he notices a bigger project like this, I mean, we spent two thousand dollars on one section, you're testing your mix that you're trying, so then you can give us feedback to that and say, this is a good thing we're gonna keep doing in this area, blah, blah, blah. It doesn't need to be every single project that's going on, but this is a big project too, it was two thousand dollars worth of tree trimming, so that's good to know.
Yeah, major projects which cost more, we would want, a lot more of a, like, you're, you, every day you got one grader guy go out and does his route, we don't need to know every little detail like that, because I'm sure you got, that's a lot of data.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
But, you know.
So this means, is this done now? Is that two days and you're done?
Yes, that's complete, yes. And, uh, on the larger dataset that I had, so specifically if we had a resident who complained about, uh, a road in our, one of your districts, if at any point you need specifically the data from that road, I can pull that out in its own deal, which I kinda did here too.
Okay, good.
The last time that a grader, because the graders, you have the map, yeah, time card, so our graders, we've got lots of markers at the office, because our employees, when they're grading a road, or any work they do on the roadways, they come back and they highlight the roads they went across, or if they were traveling a road, they'd mark there.
Okay.
And then they mark on the front what color's which day, so when he's put a time in, he goes and signs that time to these roadways. So if there's a complaint on this road right here, he can look in his system, so that's P thirteen, click P thirteen, it'll show the last date, or what we did to it last,
You know how recently someone was there.
And everything that's been done to it.
Okay, good, yeah, a record and a history.
Yeah, and then also with that, did the commission email receive a mobile three one one invite?
No.
Okay.
No, 'cause I just read through the correspondence, it's not there, well, I didn't check the spam.
Okay. Well, I can, I'll send the password here after this, and that way, you guys can get in there and see what's in three one one, what we're doing.
We'll see this.
And if you have problems with it, you can come in.
You were gonna have a, get a training guy, when's that coming up again?
I already had it.
Oh, you had?
Yes.
How'd that go, good?
Good, I, I did the web, online one with them on the web.
You pretty well understand how it works?
Yep, they said I was, I wanted to make sure I was doing it right, and they verified.
Then you gotta train the other guys now?
Yep, we've already been using it.
Oh, good, alright.
How do you, how do you think it will help? Do you think it will help to get some things projected and?
They've used it before. I think there's a cheaper and a better way to do it than mobile three one one, but, because we take our GPS cameras on the phones. Right now, they take a picture with that, then go into mobile three one one, click on the spot, write notes, upload that picture, and they bring that picture to us too. Those pictures, 'cause they're GPS tagged, we can just pull them into like Google Earth straight off the bat, and Google Earth's free, and I can pull up, hit my, open up images from each person and turn on where they've ever taken pictures of, that would be free.
Through Google Earth, we could do that without three one one, huh? And how much does three one one cost in this year?
Uh, I can't tell you, I'll stop my hand now.
I don't remember the cost for the program.
Well, initially we had a set up.
But with, with mobile three one one, you guys can log in and see where we're at, with Google Earth, you'd have to come to the office and take a look.
Yeah.
That would be the difference.
We'll try it.
But the biggest expense that goes along with mobile three one one was getting the internet connection for everybody's iPad, so we had the initial cost, startup cost of buying the iPad, which they need for Google Earth anyhow.
For the time cards.
And then the inter.
Yeah.
Doing their time cards, Google Earth is just on the computer, so.
No, no, I'm talking about, when we, when we invested in mobile three one one, the internet to have, to, the, the initial startup cost for everybody to have an iPad on their route, okay? That was a big cost, I don't remember what the actual program membership cost is per year, but one of the bigger costs was the monthly internet that we're gonna have to have no matter what we use, so I'm just saying.
Yeah, the, the, well, the internet's just for their client, time clock, and then mobile three one one.
That's what I mean, but we purchased internet specifically for each iPad to have access to be able to do the upload.
Yeah.
And now the time clock came as an afterthought from that, so financially, I'm not sure what mobile three one one costs in a year.
I.
Well, you got a setup cost initially, it wasn't a couple thousand bucks, was it?
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
But now to keep it operating.
The biggest investment was the equipment and the internet, which you're gonna now use no matter whether you use Google Earth or.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, yeah, the, the Google Earth would just be, it would be at one locator, on a computer office.
But they still need internet individually, which, which was our greater expense to compare to doing it all on paper, is what I was saying, I mean.
Correct. Yep.
Are they still having troubles sometimes, uh, when you're way out, the hills up by Hunter and down by Wilson Life, probably losing, uh, losing connection.
Connection, yeah, so I showed them on their tablets how if they've lost connections, they can't take, put the work order in at the actual job site, how they can go back. On a map and add it in the right spot, and if they're having troubles, they come to our office, give us the picture, and we upload it on there.
Alright, yeah, you can get around it, you can still record the data, then later when you get data, when you get internet connectivity again, then you can download.
Yeah, 'cause ba- we take, like, from the FEMA flooding, all those pictures, we put all of those into Google Earth. Um, we can just, mobile three one one basically be, we'd be doubling, just, just reentry of every.
Well, for now, we've got, you gotta go.
We're using it, so.
Let's use it and see, maybe reevaluate in six months to a year, then do you think it's good, or, and you think we do something cheaper, still get that data, maybe we'll do that, but for now, let's use this, so.
Okay.
Well, I think he just needs to get acclimated, so that people are.
Yeah, get the people to use it.
Yeah, and if you wanna switch over to a later date and you have a, a cost savings analysis, I don't think that's priority at the moment.
Does that help you then, if you take pictures of culverts that's bad, then you can prioritize, well, that one's bad, we gotta fix it up first, so this one's second, third, fourth, you know, 'cause you're gonna have a lot of issues, obviously, roads, dip, culverts, whatever, and that way maybe you can prioritize things to do best, or gravel or whatever. Well, that's the whole idea here.
And that's what we're doing with it.
You think it helps you as a tool? Not really?
Yes and no.
Yeah.
There's, there's lots of options out there.
Yeah. Well, you could take a picture.
Less expensive, more expensive.
Well, you could take a picture with your cell phone here and say, this is avenue A and, uh, one twentieth, and says we got a culvert down here, and email it back to you guys at the office. With this, why do you need the three one ones now? That's, you know.
That's kind of what that tablet just did.
But I'm not, but, of course, what are the issues that we gotta go with?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I, you have it now, use it.
Yeah.
Reevaluate in the future.
Right, okay.
'Cause it's already been paid for with this.
But this is good, and, uh, and rest of your, uh, data, and what else do you, what else did I ask you last week too, if you had, uh?
I've got a question on this, uh, can I assume that the hundred and forty-eight forty-four is the cost of grading a mile of road?
So that would've been the grader sp- spraying the material.
That's what you have for John Williams.
That was his time as he was spraying the dump material on the road.
Uh, just grading a road, uh, how much does that cost for time, equipment?
So.
Depreciation of the machine, do you have any idea?
Each, each piece of equipment has a set, uh, amount, a dollar amount for, uh, hourly usage. Uh, this one is twenty-five per hour, um, that's added with, uh, John's labor cost, so he's obviously at a higher rate than most of the guys who's.
Right. But now, on a normal day, do you make one pass, two passes, three passes, or does it depend?
Two passes to three passes.
And how many times a year do you do that on a road? Just the ballpark, because I'm trying to figure out how much it's gonna cost.
With ideal weather, ideal weather, ideal conditions, you're grading at roughly five to seven miles an hour, seven miles an hour being the top speed. And you're gonna touch it, in an ideal world, you'd only need to touch a good gravel road five to six, or four to seven times a year, at most. We touch our roads a lot more often.
So, every mile, we can put in minimum maintenance, I'd like to know, how much that's gonna save, 'cause minimum maintenance is, what, once a year, if that?
Eight, minimum maintenance, it's not no maintenance, it can be whatever you set your minimum to be.
While we're on that subject, so we had talked about this, and someone brought it up, 'cause they heard it in the meeting.
Yeah.
And, you know, the, the concern was, well, if you just leave it become a two, like a, uh, a one lane track, you know, like an ATV track or something, then you get all that growth, but, but that's when mow, was my response, if we were mowing instead, as opposed to blading, for some of those, you know, infrequently traveled minimum maintenance, that shouldn't be a problem for anyone, as long as the weather's not sloppy.
Well, we'd still grade them, say, we'd still grade them, say, twice a year, but not eight times a year, you know? That'd save us back a lot of, save us a lot of expenses.
Like, after a heavy storm, you normally blade the same patch of road twice.
Okay.
First time to move the big stuff out, second time to smooth it back out.
Yeah.
Basically, so you, you cut down, you cut out your potholes, your washouts, and you come back across to make your kind of leather cut.
Let it off.
So every major rain or snow event, every road to get in touch at least.
Well, I could see that, even your minimum, minimum maintenance, if we had a flood, you'd need to go on then, 'cause they got a ditch.
But I'm more or less talking about that, that end of that lane where it's just one farmer getting to his fields or pasture, let's say,
Right.
you end up with the, the ATV track with the grass in the middle.
Yeah.
You don't really need to manipulate that, as long as the growth isn't so high that they can't even get through there.
Correct.
You know, if it's, if it's a lucky mess, you're not gonna be able to help that with grading it anyhow, is what I'm hearing at it.
Yeah, I, there's some. There's some, uh, roads up in the hills where the guys check their cattle, and they're the ones that ever go there, except for deer hunters, they drive around there.
Mm-hmm.
But, so, some of them could be, and some, I know.
I think some of that's left better settled where it is.
I, I know, I have some friends of mine that are ranchers up southwest out here, and since they wished we wouldn't even be allowed, because they're, because they're rock and sand up there anyway.
Right, right. Right, so disturbing all of the.
Well, and they, they're, they're fine mostly, unless you have real bad rain and a washed out or something, but otherwise, a lot of them don't even want to be on there really.
But I think some of the problem is the operators themselves, in their own route, whatever that route is of the ten, they know that the expectations of the public, or that they see them working, which means passing by on their equipment, but that doesn't necessarily mean, I mean, we need to have more of a breakdown for communication in the department as to what needs touched how frequently and when, compared to just, oh, I, you know, it's a decent day, I better get out there and get as many miles done as I can. This is where I think the map will help with the major collectors, minor collectors, and then deeming more minimum maintenance out there.
Correct.
I think that's what public wants mostly, the major roads collectors, because that's what everybody's using, major, seventy percent of the time is these main roads.
Yep, and, and that's what we are doing, and then we go to our gravels.
Right.
But maybe there's a prior, a different priority on our gravels that I don't know, and others don't know.
Yeah, well.
They just, they, they go, they go for these majors and minor collectors, and they go to our gravels, and then what they call our secondary gravels, which are not as frequently traveled, it's been graded for maybe one person or one farmer.
Just to get to a residence or something like that.
Yeah, and then they go our dirt, dirt roads.
But I will say, one of the biggest complaints in my district is, on those minimum maintenance or dirt roads, the mowing isn't happening, and if it is happening, it's at the end of the summer, then they're blowing the Johnson grass seed everywhere, um, so that has to be.
So Sylvan's mower was down when I came, when I started in September.
This is multiple years, this is multiple years, not just.
We're just talking in the future, she's right, in the future, we could get on it in the spring, say we get good rain here in May, April, May, get out there and mow in June, maybe, when it's this tall, and then, you know, May afternoon, mow again, in July, maybe again, when it's that tall again, if it depends on the rain, depends on the rain.
You mow, yeah, you mow two times to three times a year.
If it's drought, you don't, if it rains a lot, you do, you know, it's.
But it's really critical that first mowing, I think, because the longer you wait, the more that growth happens, and then, and then if you're not able to get to the road, even if it does need graded, you're, you're letting all of that just kind of take over, and people are, the farmers are getting a little frustrated with that, and then they, then they say, well, that should be sprayed, well, I have to say, this is a lot of miles of road for one person to spray, so, you know, I know he, and I've seen his maps.
And our, our employees spray as well.
I know, there was a, an agreement where you guys were doing the eastern half, I think.
Well, you had an employee, you had an employee helping Dan Aiden in the summer last year, you had, uh, coat and pants or anything, was helping.
And when we're, when we were out trimming those trees, we were also spraying.
Okay.
And.
Yeah.
We, our shops all have small tanks, all the outlined shops, and like, the shop has small tanks to spray.
Especially if you knock your weeds, like bindweed and mussel especially, and Johnson grass, uh, that's the big ones to get, you know? But that sounds good.
Anything else for me?
No, but if you, every minimum maintenance road that we create over what we have now, saves you about twenty-three passes per year, which is a hundred and fifty dollars per mile per pass, that's a good amount of money, so if we're not using those roads, or only one person's using them, we ought to do minimum maintenance. So if we're not using those roads or only one person's using them, we have to go minimum maintenance.
Yeah, we need to.
Most of the farmers I know, if they're the only one who use that road, they really don't want you on there anyway, of course, when it grows up in broom grass.
Doesn't need rain.
Of the, all of the erosion and everything else out, and it will grow up in broom whether you want to or not.
Yeah, kinda do.
But that looks to me like.
Unless it's like pasture.
That is what I'm looking at, the evaluation, where I can move into minimum maintenance, that's a lot of money we could save.
Correct.
And on our maps.
Wear and tear on the machine and everything.
In our maps.
I'm not advocating we do like, Slink County has done where they closed basically every other pile, any bridge that falls on that, no, we we can't do that.
No, we rely too much on agriculture.
No, we're not, we're not.
No, and that's, that's what I'm not hoping. Listen to these or watch these, think that I'm trying to go towards.
And that comment I said was toward us talking about minimum maintenance and saying, yeah, well, you don't go down it with the blade, then you let everything grow. Well, you can go down it with a mower and not have to disturb them, the actual, yeah.
The broom kinda takes care of itself, it didn't only grow so high and it's easy to get rid of it, broom chokes most everything else out.
That's why they plan to go off for reclamation.
And I, and I request for us three that, on our maps he gave us to mark on there where you think you should have a minimum maintenance in your district.
Yeah.
Your district and my district, and where we think we are, we know are, a lot of I do, and you guys know your uh. Your constituents, where you think that would work, what roads would be, you know? Of course, then you'd better discuss it with the farmers and ranchers around there before we say minimum maintenance.
Once I get your three maps together, yeah, once I get your three maps, I'll compile it all into one big map like that. We can have posts somewhere, and then you could say, yeah, public opinion on it.
Right, well, I.
Yeah, and and that just goes along with all the, the regular complaints that you get, someone may say, hey, you know, we want this done here, and it's a special case, but it's not. Maybe treated like that every year, just that particular season or something. The other thing I I was gonna say, there have been some rotation of operators, you know? And so then different routes are being now manned by different people, and I've heard there, that happened where I live. And then, you know, I know some of the other people that have changed operators in, on their roads. So some of the comments are about windrows, it seems like certain operators are using heavy windrows. And maybe, I don't know if that means they're just scalping more material, or. It probably depends on if you've laid material recently, I understand their conditions.
Trying to cut out a pothole or area that's washboarding.
So have you had discussions with them about trying to practically eliminate windrows? Because I will say on my road, there have been barely any, there's been barely any windrow compared to prior. There was always some sort of windrow, which I.
So the old school thought was you keep a windrow, that way you fill your pothole in. It's not gonna fill, it's not gonna compact, it's just gonna be loose material in a hole that when water comes, it's gonna flow down and pound out. That's why people would leave windrows now, and that's why I've been talking with the guys on, ideally, you don't leave a, leave a windrow. Or if it is, it's minimal, and you have multiple breaks, and it's a water gets off of our road and into the ditch.
So, if you have new material laid down for this particular mile, you might have a windrow during that mile because you're trying to let that material.
Settle and find your lowest place to fill in it.
Who's, who's grading my road?
Shelton Frederick.
Well, you better put him to work, cause he finally got it out where he feathers it out and he has almost no windrow. But I've got some terrible culvert washouts that come in three or four feet into the road that you need to look at sometime.
I don't think so, I think you have um.
He's done a great job on the road the first time, when the previous operator was there, you could go out there and dig up a load of dirt.
And then, a lot of employees were wondering, were you guys going to come back out to the apartments like you did back this previous summer? Cuz it does mean a lot to them.
Yeah, I know, come and visit.
Yeah, I think we should, I don't know if we should feed you guys again, but we.
You have an organization there out there on your own too.
I don't know if we can afford to do that.
And you can do it on company time, should be.
Yeah, we could come out and visit you guys again and have a, just a discussion and they can.
Who's gonna tell Norman that he can't eat out there? He was first in line the last time.
Who? Oh.
Norman Mamel.
Um.
I don't know what, do you guys wanna set some date now or?
No, I think, I think we need to get through these next couple of weeks with evaluations and our raises and all of that.
We're pretty busy right now.
No, I know, it's just something that.
We need to go into executive session for evaluations, we can start yours.
Okay.
Um, but did you have, you gave me the pace, you gave us the pay scale, did you have recommendations for the current. Distribution for the raises for this year, we calculated fifty cents a head, do you come up with recommendations based on evaluations or do we?
Uh, it's on that, the pay ra- pay rate. Page that I sent you.
In the email?
Yes.
Okay, I have this in here then.
And it should be on one side of that document, it has names and what rate.
Okay, so I moved to recess into executive session for twenty minutes. For the purpose of discussing highway department evaluations and pay scale. To reconvene, oh, according, uh, pursuant to KSA seventy five forty three nineteen to be number one personnel director, personnel matters.
I'll second.
Who's uh, who's?
I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't finish, to reconvene in the commission room with the commission and the director. If we don't do individual, if we don't do individual evaluations right now, do we wanna at least go over the pay scale?
We can go over pay scale with Caleb, or does that? And don't do individuals, that's fine.
Okay, so. With the commission and the director of the highway department, the office manager.
Office manager too.
I was just asking him, yes.
It's fine.
I did second, again.
Motion's been made and seconded to go into executive session with the highway department director and office manager for twenty minutes.
And I would just like to explain in the discussion, we're not going to actually pull out each employee's individual evaluation, that's for you. Not necessarily the office manager, so what we really need to go over is the pay scale and talk about how that money is going to be spread out. We don't even need to discuss per person, but I think, but we need to talk about the whys and the evaluations themselves.
At a later time.
Yeah, and then, and then for us to discuss, to do your evaluation.
Hang on then, if you're not gonna discuss people, then why do you need to be in executive session?
That's true. I guess I was thinking.
And if you're not gonna review the evaluations, then why would it be included in the discussion? I think you should look at the evaluations and review those.
Okay, I guess I didn't know if we were gonna include the office man- the office manager, I mean, I wanted him to be a part of talking about how we're going to do that, but maybe. Did, but did he sit down on the evaluations with the people?
No.
No, okay, so then.
We'd, he better not be in here.
Yeah, let's, I I'm, I'll amend my, let me amend my emotion, amend, let me amend my motion, excuse me. To exclude the office manager, and then we will talk about the pay scale per individual person and how that's going to calculate out.
Yep.
You're right, Don, if we, yeah, if if I was just talking about money, we don't need to be in executive session.
Location.
So is there a second to the amendment?
Okay, we have a motion.
I don't even know if I do this right in the.
Yes, you you amend it, you vote on the amendment, then you vote on the original motion.
Okay, we had a motion, a second to amend the first motion, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we'll.
No, as amended.
As amended, there you go. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, no problem.
Put on the agenda, Rhonda come and ask why her name wasn't on there, because you told her to come at one o'clock.
Yeah.
So I told her to come at one o'clock, cuz it was crossed off.
Rhonda?
Um, Rhonda, so you guys will have at one o'clock.
Okay.
Rhonda, PDC will take like a whole whopping five minutes.
Just to pay the.
To pay the bills and approve, or you send some minutes and free other.
Okay.
Yeah, we're uh, so uh.
It can be.
We have one clarification issue, so what you're saying is, because we already have his email.
Yeah.
We don't need him to individually look at all the, okay, so then it won't take as long.
So only, only ones we have to have with the department head, because we're evaluating them, these people, he's evaluating all of those. And so we can read them, but we don't need him in there, and we're not gonna have the employee in here to discuss the, that's.
No, we don't have the employee, but I, I just.
In case you had questions on it.
Yeah, I'm open to changes, last year, we discussed every evaluation that the director of the department did. Just to verify yea or nay with what type of raise they're getting, or just to kind of see the trends, like I said.
Well, we'll still read all these reports, we just don't need him sitting in there while we do that.
Okay, cuz I have got my Mr. Webby at twelve thirty, so.
Yeah, well, go now because we're gonna do lunch, right?
We're gonna do lunch, yeah.
You were on the agenda for next week, weren't you?
I think so, you had me, you had me at, when you'd come by, there was a little bit on here, and then you said, you don't need me, and then. Next week was the rest of them, and then the twenty eighth was my home at two o'clock.
Okay.
Is that what, you had come by the office and said, you said four o'clock, and you came back and went to two? Yes.
Period.
Yeah, I don't remember, it's not, all those are.
It's also six months after my hire day, basically, the twenty eighth.
Okay.
I'm in my sixth month right now.
That's good to know. Uh, we already have someone at one o'clock, so if we really need you, we'll call you, how about that?
Yeah, why don't we, uh, why don't we take a recess for lunch till one o'clock?
Okay.
Are you a computer smart?
Yes, what do you need?
I'll be with you in a minute, okay? We didn't do the minutes, so why don't we review the minutes, Alexis and Jim?
Sure.
And uh. We'll see if you like those, we'll approve them.
I thought of something when I was going upstairs, I didn't, but you guys were having a special meeting on the, it's the twenty first.
I think that's what we said, to make sure we finished the handbook and whatever else we need to do before the pay period ends.
I did think of that when I was going upstairs.
At ten, correct? Yes.
On the twenty first?
Yeah, the Friday.
I won't be here. I didn't know we're doing, I just, I didn't check my calendar closely enough.
Oh, so I'm not supposed to be in here that afternoon at one forty five like you asked me to be?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
On February twenty first?
Yeah.
Or did we say February twenty?
Well, we were making sure we were gonna finish our department. No, I, we did say Friday, we did.
We did last week.
I didn't check my calendar closely enough.
Well, how ca- how can we fit something in before the pay period, and Switch Dawn has to have everything on Monday, right, twenty fourth? What do you wanna do, do you wanna do?
The twenty fourth, I'm not gonna be here that week.
Right, well, no, we have to have it all done by then anyhow, cuz she has to do payroll that week, or is your help starting by then?
I'll be back Friday.
I think we're gonna start the seventeenth.
Okay, I'm, I'm saying they'll be here to experience that first payroll this month, um.
When the twenty eighth, the Friday's when we pay, do payroll, I'll be back for now, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm saying we have to have, we don't have to, but we really should, we were gonna make sure we wrap up all. Everybody's new pay rate and evaluation needs to be done by the twenty first, that's why we picked the twenty first.
Okay.
So what do you wanna do, if he can't do Friday?
You wanna do another day?
Yeah, anytime.
Well, let me look to, I don't know, do I?
What you wanna do this evening, Friday, I'll be back uh by, I'll be four thirty.
I could do, you, well, but then that's.
I could do it.
But you guys were gonna have department heads come in the evening, or come in the afternoon.
That was when you were supposed, yeah, that you were gonna be department heads.
That's my error, I just, I didn't check my calendar.
What about Thursday?
I'm doing Thursday.
The twentieth, I can do that.
Let's just do for Thursday.
The twentieth, what, what, ten in the morning?
Do I just, do I just change my time to the twentieth instead of the twenty? Yes, please.
That'll work for you.
Yep, it should.
Sorry.
That's okay.
It's all right.
That's okay.
So Thursday now, the twentieth at ten, and Friday's off, we're gonna camp for that.
Okay, so. Do you want me to leave it out or put it in the minutes? Because I forgot, or do we need to just put it in this week's minutes?
Yeah, let's just put it in new, for you.
I think so, put it in new, and we never, you never mentioned twenty first in the other minutes?
No, I.
That's okay, that, that, well, that's fine, cuz we're deleting it anyway now, so it didn't hurt anything, alright. Okay, anybody review the minutes, Jim, have you, or Alexis?
I reviewed them yesterday, we found them adequate, and I would propose that we approve the minutes.
Okay, then I'll second it, Alexis, do you have any?
I don't think so.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the February third minutes, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried and then opposed, and now Rhonda, do you want to discuss? While you're here? Okay.
It needs to be an executive session.
Executive session, well, you can do that, you can come up here if you want to sit, or whatever. How long do you need an executive session for?
It's you guys' excuse, it's a, one of our evaluation.
Evaluation.
Oh, I moved to recess into executive session, we have just won, correct, for ten minutes. For the purpose of discussing the appraiser's office employee evaluation with the department head pursuant to KSA seventy five forty three nineteen. To be number one, personnel matters of non-elected personnel. To reconvene in the commission room with the commission and Rhonda Wright.
I'll second. Motion's been made and seconded to uh go into executive session with the Rhonda Wright. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
And you know, okay, thank you. I do have one question before you go, someone asked me, if you listened to the meeting, the, we had a, we had quite a few tax abatements. A couple of weeks ago, two weeks ago, was that?
Payment, payment and protest ones.
Oh, payment, okay, so, so what, could you explain that a little bit, because I didn't know what to tell them?
Okay.
They were just asking me why it was such a large amount, and was that something that was miscalculated, or?
Well, I, yes and no, okay, each year, when we, when we send notices out in March. People have thirty days after that to a pa- uh file appeal if they don't like the value.
Okay.
Then in November, when taxes come out, they have the choice, they have the option. If they didn't uh file appeal in the springtime, they can uh file a payment under protest.
Okay.
And on the ones that we did, the. One of them, two of them, the houses on the inside were in worse shape than what, see, we don't go in houses. So we just have to look from the outside, so when we do an appeal, we make, we tell them, okay, we need to come in and see the inside. So we know, you know, what the problems are, so there was two houses that we lowered, and then there was one. That um, the owners, the landlords, or however you wanna say it. The property owners had changed um some cropland to pasture or grass, and they never let us. Let not, never let us know about it, in fact, that one, they did that a couple of years ago, but they said that was their fault for not letting us know. So we just changed it for nineteen, what they had done.
Okay, the year prior, the state is what they are, everything.
Yeah, so.
If CRP comes out with a contract, and then say just put it back to pasture, are they supposed to notify you? You don't get a notification from the FSA or nowhere, RAC or CS on that.
No, what we do is, we have, if we have the information, we have in the computer. Uh, in our notes, CRP expires nine thirty one of nineteen, okay, we send letters out then to all those people. Who have contracts running out, and they're supposed to send us back or let us know uh what they did with it. Um, some of them, we don't have contract dates, we've gotten most, gotten where we got most of. See, we don't get that information from FSA unless the person fills out the, the request form that gives them permission to give us the information. But yes, it's the, it's the owner's responsibility to let us know what they done.
I have a question, like CRP waterway, say you have CRP waterway, and you're getting payments from the government on that every year, once that expires, say in ten years. They still leave it a little waterway, but they're not getting government payments on that, does that change your valuation on it, since they're not getting government payment on that? But it's still a waterway?
Depends on what they do with it, if they put it to grass, if they leave it to water.
Grass like a waterway.
If they, if they break out the, the CRP back to crop, and that waterway is in that crop, then it's done as waterway. If they break out the CRP and everything and put it to pasture, it's gonna be as pasture, no matter if it was CR, no matter if it was waterway.
But I'm just talking, a CRP waterway, there's a waterway just by itself, is a CRP waterway, not, not all pasture, yeah, I have some of them.
Yeah, then that's.
And then they're saying in ten years, my contract expires, and I don't get any more government payment on that, but I leave it as a waterway. Nothing's changed, except I just don't get paid to government anymore, and that doesn't affect your taxes.
No, then it would go back to a waterway.
Yeah, I wish it'd be less valuable than a CRP waterway, cuz CRP you get government payments, so that changes the taxes, huh?
Yeah, CR, CRP is done as cropland.
Okay.
And.
Well, yeah, but CRP, you're talking CRP like a big four, fifty acre field. I'm talking about just a waterway.
Well, that would still.
Which would never change.
They would still calculate the acreage of that particular waterway, and it would change from waterway to CRP or back to waterway.
CRP back to waterway, which is a different rating.
Right, right, which would be less.
I, I thought, I didn't know how that worked. Okay.
Yeah, so, when, like yours, when the contract runs out?
Yeah.
Come in and tell us what you do.
Yeah, I need to do that. See, a lot of farmers don't know to do that.
No, that's why we send the, that's why we send the letters out.
Guys don't know to do that.
Yeah, that's why we send the letters.
I think you're busy doing all your other calculations.
And, and you just, you see your contract lapse and you don't realize that you need to form you guys.
Well, yeah, that's why we send, that's why we send the letters.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I had an incident the other day, and it didn't have to do with CRP. I, people get letters from us, and they don't open them, they throw them in the trash. Cause I had an incident the other day that, uh, I said, we sent you a letter. Oh, well, anything that comes from your office, I just throw in the trash. We try.
I know.
We try to get information from, but she writes.
Well, I know a lot of farmers do that.
The, the gal Wright told me, she says, oh, anything from your office, I just throw in the trash. That's not, don't blame us for the problem, and if you're not, if you're not going to, uh,
Right.
Take care of what we send you and stuff. But yeah, she came right out and told me that.
Well, thanks, Rhonda.
Okay, so, the twentieth then, and it's still at one forty-five. Okay.
Thank you.
I'll change my calendar.
Sorry.
That's, that's okay.
All right, we gonna do this PBC thing now before one thirty? We got Department Head at one thirty. We got ten minutes to do the PBC.
We have it scheduled at one o'clock, yeah.
I'd say that's up to you, or we can do it at the end. The only thing that I wanted you to do is work on Lydona's evaluation before she comes.
Oh, before she comes?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's better do that.
Just because she wants to talk to you guys about something that you may be upset about, she doesn't.
She doesn't want to reflect her.
I told her, I felt like you guys were very.
Put together than that.
Well, I told her that I felt you guys were always very respectful towards her, and I understand. Sometimes controversy, it makes you worried.
Well, she's not here till two. Of course, the ones are coming here at one thirty.
Yeah, let's do it now, we have ten minutes.
And she's going to try to get here at two. She had a funeral, so initially she was.
Let's do them now, then.
I moved to recess and do executive session for ten minutes for the purpose of doing the Department Head evaluation at the Health Department pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B number one, personnel matters of non-elected personnel to reconvene in the commission room with the commission.
I'll second. You got it second, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay.
You said for ten minutes, correct?
Yes.
Okay, motion's been made, a second to, uh, to, uh, recess into executive session for ten minutes for discussing the, uh, Lada and My, or, or, oh, Lada and My, or.
Reiner.
Reiner, I'm sorry. Uh, the evaluation for the Health Department. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried and opposed.
Is it a small D? Hello?
Hi.
Sorry, do you wanna talk first, or do you wanna go over this first?
Do that first.
Okay.
Well, I don't, you might not, I mean, after I go through.
Is yours in the executive session?
So you're gonna go ahead and review hers? Okay, and do you want, hold on, did you bring me your departments?
Yeah, I did.
Do you want?
Do you have them?
I, I have.
Okay, I only have the whole.
I have everybody that brought, you know, some of the envelopes, I'm not sure whose or.
It's a big brown envelope.
Do we have someone on the schedule that we need to watch out our agenda, or?
No?
No.
Just Lada and after that.
Okay, then I'll do all of them with yours. Do you think a half an hour will do it?
Probably.
Is that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I moved to recess into executive session for thirty minutes for the purpose of going over all of the Health Department evaluations with the Health Department Head pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B number one, personnel matters of non-elected personnel, commission and Lada and Reiner.
I'll second that. Motion's been made and seconded to, uh, enter executive session with the Administrator Health Department for thirty minutes to review evaluations. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried and opposed.
Really trying.
I haven't been around.
That first time.
See, there you go, I just, don't have to go. But I, no, now, I know you provide good services, I didn't have the issue. It's just that, some people just.
They don't.
Well, no, they don't think of it. And then they think if they're, they go to the doctor or the clinic for doing stuff, and they forget that you got it, you know?
Well, it's, it actually makes me refer to that.
The clinics refer to us a lot, so.
Have you met with Jean, what is her last name?
Yes, she was, she met with us after.
The new hospital, I'm gonna start her.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Cause I wanted to, we talked about the summer lunch program at the hospital.
Are they doing it again?
So far, yes. So, that was exciting. I mean, cause I was really afraid that was gonna fall away, so, so far. It's still staying. Okay, emergency management stuff. I just have a pile of stuff, I guess, I'm gonna go over. This, this is set up for March sixteen. I went ahead and set it up because, I guess, I did listen to the video about, talking about splitting it up against different people. And I, I can't tell you this for sure, but I think the expectation would be that somebody would be appointed emergency manager, and somebody would be assistant, 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 assistant. But that emergency manager has to be appointed. And, um, the, I was gonna have Keith Habercorn come from Russell and Ellsworth, but he's out in Hill City today. But I wanted him to talk about what a part-time would look like, what part-time looks like. Um, just what he does and what he farms out to other, like, I know both of his health departments do the badging and stuff like that to help him out, because it's not really two part-time jobs, it's two, a little bit more than part-time jobs. But I thought maybe if he could add some insight that I know nothing about.
Yeah, I mean, I think we really do need to speak to him. The way I understood it, when I spoke to some other people and I didn't speak to him, is he's doing, he's taking care of the administrative end of it. And like you said, if there are things that can be delegated.
They are, yeah.
So you could actually bill, if, if you did something like that, like you're doing now, you can bill for your time. Which you're billing for your hourly rate.
Yes.
Per month, correct?
Yes. So, um, I just, you know, I don't know what, what your thoughts are. There have been some, some talk around, just that if it was back open to part-time, there might be some people that would apply. I don't, I don't know that for a fact. I just have heard that. Um, the, well, let's just take the project of the, I sent the emergency plan to the Lincoln Commissioners. It's like two hundred and eighty-five pages. You were talking about seeing a copy of the plan?
Yeah.
Do you have a printed copy in your office, Dawn?
I potentially.
Maybe, yeah, I'm not sure. But it's huge, so I didn't know if it went through. I just did it earlier today.
L E O P?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. That's a copy. I did bring, and there's, and, don't get me, don't quote me on this cause I don't know how many L, I don't know how many E S F there are. There, there's a, there's a major portion of the plan, and then there's sixteen or seventeen, I'm not sure how many of these external, these are all different. But there's like sixteen or seven different sections. So there's a main part of the plan, and then there's fifteen of these, and they're all different sections. And in there, it says, this part, this agency is responsible for this, and this agency is responsible for that. The, the emergency plan is a legal document, and if there's an emergency and some legal something comes out of it, did you follow your plan the way it's written? It gets updated every five years, and this is the year it's supposed to be getting updated.
By December?
I'm not sure the deadline, I think it's summer, August, maybe. But the region is working to, the last time we did it, I'll just give you history. Five years ago was when David first started, and they hired someone to do it. The county's portion was ten thousand dollars, I believe, and the other portion, they got a grant for, so I don't know what the total cost was. I'm just telling you, it's very expensive to get it updated. And you can't just go through there and mark stuff out because you, because of the legality of it. I don't understand it all, and I don't.
Do you know prior to that, had we also contracted to do that?
Yes, I believe so. So now the region is paying for it, to do it as a group.
Oh.
The second meeting is February twenty-sixth. We cannot participate. I will read you the email. I, I don't wanna say we can't participate.
From the regional?
Yes. The training workshop is intended for individuals who have an active role. Cause I asked, can we still get our plan updated if we don't have an emergency manager, if somebody comes? Well, there's a computer program they're doing to update it. Um, they would, the workshop is intended for individuals who have an active role in development or maintenance of a local plan. We will support any individual at the workshop who has a role from your county. However, we will only grant permission of the L E O planning system, which is the computer program, to an appointed emergency manager. So even if it's just an appointed temporary, one of you all, or somebody, w- we are not, we can't have access.
To participate in this group?
Right.
Updating?
Right.
Which we don't, there, is there a fee, or?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, so that's the benefit of doing it with the region. Um, they will support the county with development and maintenance of the L O, L E O P, regardless of Lincoln County's in attendance or not. But it will be a canned plan, and it won't be specific to Lincoln County, and we would not be eligible for E M P G grant money if we're, we don't participate in this and have an approved plan. So.
Did you catch that? We've been paying to do the updates, subcontracting it.
We did a long time.
No, we've done it, but it's, it's only a requirement every five years, and we've paid to sub that out. So we haven't even made the expense, an internal house pay for, for the employees, so.
That's the main county.
Because of the legal jargon, I think. The main county plan, right.
That does not have the two school districts, all the little villages.
That's one of these.
All the various.
Right.
The school districts and things? No, they're their own little plans, and the emergency manager helps them do a lot of their little plans.
They've got them all, and each one is a book.
Yeah.
And they're labeled, and they have all of the things, you have to imagine all the things that can go wrong, and they tell you to do that. And then you have to plan, have a plan for each of those things that go wrong. Who to call, who to do this, who to do that.
And the, the schools, and like the nursing home and the hospital, the nursing home and the hospital have to do them now too, to get paid by Medicare. So the emergency manager helps them with their plans too, because they have no idea how to plan.
Plans have to be exercised.
Yeah, the plans have to be exercised.
Manager is, has to develop an exercise program on how you wanna do it, where you wanna be and all that stuff.
Right. So there's a lot more to it than just, yeah, there's a lot more to it than, than meets the eye. So I'm just saying, if, for this step, if we want our plan to be updated, somebody has to be appointed, and somebody has to go to that meeting on February twenty-sixth, and somebody has to take that on as their job. I, that's too big of a job for me. So.
What time on the twenty-sixth is that? That's rocky, it'll come down eventually.
I can, I can, it's, it's like eight thirty to three thirty. It's in Minneapolis in the courthouse basement. I don't have the actual training date on this email. Now, the alternative is you don't update your plan, you go without an updated plan and hope an emergency doesn't happen, and you don't get sued and not following your plan. I don't know. And you don't get E M P G money, and that's about seven thousand dollars a year. They're still discussing, they approved us for twenty-twenty's E M P G money, but one of the trainings that we turned in, they're still discussing. So I don't know if we're gonna get it, and that's about seventy-eight hundred dollars. So, if you continue not to appoint an emergency manager, you will not even be eligible to apply in twenty-twenty for the E M P G grant. And if you don't apply for it, you're out two years. So basically, you're out three years it, of E M P G money, so. That is why you need to at least appoint a temporary emergency manager or hire someone to be the emergency manager before too much longer, or you get too far through the year and they may not approve it. Based on that fact alone. So those are two things I wanted to talk to you about. And basically, they just want a contact person. I mean, you could appoint one of you three, if you're willing to go to the meeting and work on the plan with their help, and appoint him as a contact person, as a temporary emergency manager until you hire somebody. Cause until you hire somebody or appoint somebody, you are, you are emergency management.
May I ask a couple questions? Um, what did you say the name is of the guy who lives in Ellsworth and Russell?
Keith Habercorn. And he said he could come next Tuesday in the afternoon if you, if you were gonna be here next Tuesday in the afternoon.
That's a meeting, correct?
Right, but I didn't know if you were here in the afternoon or not.
We have all those evaluations and.
Oh, okay.
I don't know what all he has set up, cause I have.
Next Tuesday?
Yeah, Monday's off.
I'd like to, I'd really like to speak with him then, because it, it was my understanding, just like you said, I didn't know who was doing what, but you're saying maybe one of the health departments of the two counties is doing the badging for that particular county.
Are, yeah. And I would like to bring up the badging. I took the badging, excuse me, the badging equipment over to my office so I could play with it. I know how it works, I just haven't done it in a long time. I think I would, I could safely say that I would keep the badging. I would be okay with that, because.
Black badges in there.
A fire, a, oh, there's tons of stuff.
Yeah, you know that.
But, you know, if a fire department's in Link, a fire department guy's in Lincoln, and he just wants to pop in and get his badge updated. If we had it, we're there all the time.
Yeah, you have.
It's not hard at all to do. It's just, once I get it figured, I've got it all working, except for I can't get the code to print, and I gotta call the printer place, but, um, I, I would be willing to step up and say, we would keep that for the new person, didn't have to worry about that. I don't have a problem keeping that.
Okay, and have you been doing the quarterly reports?
Um, no. You only have to do them once a year technically with the E M P G. So I have not finished the quarterly report, it's due, they moved it back to March because they're still trying to decide if that exercise counts. If that exercise doesn't count, we're not getting the E M P G money. No, for last year. There's an exercise that may not count. If, if it doesn't count, we don't have enough, and they probably won't give us the E M P G money at all. So the quarterly report is kind of, why go to all the trouble to fill it out if we're not gonna get any money? That's, that's my opinion. I can still do it, but I'm not sure there's a point if we're not gonna get any money.
So, you've been taking this on now for about six months, I think, or, or even more, maybe?
August.
Six, okay. Okay, so what are your billable hours per month? Just from, you've been doing all the correspondence and just kinda collecting information and maybe step around. What kind of billable hours do you have in a month?
Um, I, I can't tell you. Can you see those at all? That what we've turned in? I would, I would think it's around ten hours.
I'm gonna call this the administrative part.
Better twelve hours a month, probably. I could do a lot more. I'm just.
Well, if you were planning.
Don't want to.
What do you call them? If you were planning these exercises and whatnot, yeah, I can see how you can
Yeah.
definitely find more time. But I'm saying to do the bare minimum of the administrative correspondence.
Yeah, I think it's been around ten hours a month or something like that. Maybe not some, this month, maybe a little more.
And then we have every five years, the, the mass update.
But there's also the mitigation plan that's being worked on right now. There's been a lot of mitigation paperwork. I went to the first mitigation meeting, and they're, they're still not done with that one. I don't know where that hangs in the balance, and I don't keep track because when it, I just don't have time to keep track of all that and all my own stuff, so. When they're ready for me to do some more on it, I will figure it out. Um, but like, uh, I was gonna, we got the storm theory. They still wanna do an equipment monitoring visit whenever we get an emergency manager appointed. I'm not doing the inventory. I don't know who's gonna do the inventory. I mean, maybe, maybe? I would say maybe, somebody needs to do inventory. Um, I'm working on the badging. The Hunter Siren Project, hopefully the Hunter Siren will get put up. The Hunter Siren project, hopefully the Hunter Siren will get put up today, not today, this week. There was a glitch in that the, see this is where it gets over my head. The generator, that, the original generator that they had decided on is gonna be too small, so we had to go up to a bigger generator or change the siren. And you know, it's just been conference calls with the, all the people on that has taken time this month. So there's just a lot of irons in the fire that you just.
How many additional plans? You had, you had the fifteen addendums to the master plan and then how many additional? Do you know?
I don't, there's the mitigation plan, there's the flood plan, there's the hazardous materials plan. Those are the ones I know about. I'm sure there's other plans. I have no clue what they are.
Isn't the, isn't the flood plan what we sent? Or appraiser about this too?
That's true. McQueen went to the meeting.
So there's no reason that we couldn't have different.
Well, it's supposed, my understanding is that was always supposed to be in the appraiser's office, that flood plan, but.
I didn't know that, but.
With help of the emergency manager, but I don't know.
There's no reason that as you break those down, certain people couldn't have some responsibility to it. I mean, we've already sent Mister McQueen to be our representative for that, so. Can you give me a guess as to how many in addition to the master plan and the fifteen addendums?
There's probably five or six, seven plans. I don't know that many.
They have to do with what? The schools?
Oh, the schools.
They have each, the school district has an emergency plan for about five different variations. Which we don't have a plan for, I don't think. Mike may have something, but we don't have.
Well, and that's what I wanted to bring that up because.
Yeah.
But that's not integrated into our emergency operations.
No, and I wanted to bring that up, which, and, and this can get very controversial, so I don't really wanna have the whole discussion today. But our last emergency manager talked about doing an active shooter drill in the courthouse. And our sheriff did not wanna participate and I'm fine with that. Because the whole basis of the conversation was, the sheriff is not going to divulge in a public setting what the protocol is. Then, then you just may as well come and take notes. I mean, it is absolutely, in my opinion, asinine to be practicing something that when you're in the heat of the moment, the last thing you want is someone to be prepared with the antithesis reaction plan. I mean, the, the whole thing to me is arbitrary because.
That should've been a closed drill. There shouldn't be anybody involved except for the courthouse employees and the sheriff and the, and the emergency manager.
Public documents.
And it's a public building. I mean.
The documents aren't public either because it's a safety concern. You know, just like that plan I just emailed you, it's not all, um, shareable.
Like the sheriff's though.
You know, the E S A's are not shareable. Be, those E S F's are not shareable because they detail how you're gonna do something. That's not a public document. So.
They like to share a protocol like you just stated, like how they would handle an active shooter. That's not public records stuff. That's like a classified document. Because of the safety.
Well, I guess in my opinion, it's that department's responsibility to know what they're gonna do.
Yeah, but, but they need to.
Exercise with their partners. I mean, yeah.
Beforehand, when you have an active shooter, who's gonna go to what door, who's doing what floor, who's gonna search this and that. You don't want Mike over there saying, we got an active shooter. Okay, let's everybody come in here and let's talk about what we're gonna do. You gotta do that. You gotta have your plan. You have to have it exercised or then they didn't plan. Yeah. An F five tornado in the city of Lincoln needs to be thought about and planned out. You can't do that. When the tornado just moved out of town, you're gonna have that level beforehand.
Well, but the, it's not that the plans don't exist, okay? So let's clarify that. It's not that the plans don't exist. We're talking about doing an exercise. We're talking about having plans. The plans exist. If you need to do updates, you don't have to have an aeronautical science degree to, to actually understand the wording and or consult with someone. I mean, we, we already heard earlier last year that the state is paying seven regional positions to be quote unquote advocates for the positions that exist on the county level payroll. So let's utilize the actual resources that are there that we're already paying state taxes to have. I mean, this is the regional plan update that we're potentially doing for free as opposed to contracting it out for more than ten thousand dollars of our share or whatnot. You know, that was five years ago. It could cost fifteen to twenty thousand now.
Not a regional plan.
No.
They're working as a region to do individual plans.
I understand that, per county, yeah. I understand that.
But it's all about chain of command and incident command and emergency management side. Something big happens, the only way I can request extra materials is through the emergency manager who requests them through K D M, who requests them through K D A G. And that's the way the chain works. You can't call K D A G and request what you want. You have to go through the chain of command or they're gonna send it back to you. So whether I like the way it works or not, it is immaterial. I have to request what I need medically from the emergency manager. If we don't have one, who am I requesting that from? Because it won't go up the chain. That's the way it goes in emergency management.
To use the, the phrase exactly, it's an appointment of that person who is or is not within two years credentialed.
Right.
So it's still an appointment of a point of contact. It's not a person who actually tells the sheriff's department what to do. The, the fire department what to do.
Been.
I know, but I think there's a, there's a really terrible miscommunication. The public response to not having an emergency manager was, what are we gonna do in the event of an emergency? That's not the role here.
No, his role is more logistics and getting things.
Exactly.
That's his role and making sure there is a plan.
Well, the plans already exist. That's not a question.
Yeah, but I would tell you that the sheriff doesn't know what's in the emergency plan.
That's fine. I mean, that's, he's an elected official. We cannot.
Gotta say, here's the plan. It's a legal document. Yes, it is. He's supposed to look at the plan and go, where his name is in that E S F, he's supposed to look at that and go, yes, we'll do that. Yes, we'll do that. Yes, we won't do that.
Is there a place to sign?
Do at L E P C. We go through those and we make changes and what's in the plan is a legal document.
Why was that not happening if we were paying for a full-time person to be in this position?
It was how, we review those E S F's every L E P C meeting.
You're pretty sure that maybe some of these elected officials don't know.
You don't come, who's making him come to L E P C?
Why I'm asking, what were we paying a full-time person for?
Who's making him come?
We can't.
No, right. So the emergency manager has to go to the sheriff with everything he needs to look at and have a one-on-one with him.
So why wasn't that happening?
Oh, I think it probably was. Maybe David goes every time, yeah.
Okay.
If there's cooperation with those, with those things, it happens. It's just like in that plan, the clerk's office is responsible for, um, money, I think, or something. It's something that they do all the time. So if I need a check written.
But they are the designated person.
But they're the designated person in that plan. That's why we try to train together is so she knows what's in that plan, you know?
Yeah, we need to, we need to point contact.
Exactly, which I don't.
Which we better, yeah, in short term.
Well, I, I'm not saying we shouldn't have that centralized point of contact, but what I'm saying is there are ways to divvy up the responsibilities of the job. Whether it be the administrative duty of doing the quarterly reports and, and filing all the paperwork and contacting everyone at the state level, which is what you've been pretty much organizing. Or whether it be someone who's just credentialed to be a part of that chain of command and be the subordinate to yada, yada, yada. I mean, there are all kinds of ways, like you just exampleed with badging.
Five people, five people have to get their credential.
I'm not saying five are the main.
Management, they have to be. If you give them an emergency management role of any kind, they're gonna have to go get certified. So if you have five people, that's five people to get certified. I would say there doesn't exist in our county structure, five people who would care to do that.
I thought we already had people who have those three basic first levels, those.
Doesn't mean they wanna do it.
Those three basic, you need.
I mean, everybody in my office is required to by our emergency preparedness grant. Doesn't mean any one of them would take over an extra emergency management thing. I would say absolutely not for every single one of them.
Well, if it comes with a pay, that was my whole point. I wasn't asking anyone to do it for free. We have a budget for it.
I know, but a lot of things are supposed to come with a pay that never have done that, so.
Well, like this, if, we, we need to learn all these E S Fs and you said there's a lot of them. So just, it's gonna be a point of contact. They need to know all these.
But again.
Protocol, right?
The, yes, but the knowledge base is not necessarily equal to an amount of hours per payroll. That's what I'm saying. You can learn all of this. I, I could sit down and learn all this in a month and then I have the knowledge. And then you update it or, or what as you go. That doesn't necessarily mean that every month there's seventy-five hours of work to do. Once you've learned something, you're not spending hours relearning unless you can't retain information. At that point, you shouldn't have the job.
But the same thing is, you have turnover in the fire department and EMS and all the other departments. You know, there's new people to train and do, you know, to bring trainings in for and things also. I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and say there's a reason to have an emergency manager or not. I think a part-time emergency manager is necessary. I think you need one point of contact. Now, whether there's an assistant or a couple assistants that do other things, that would be probably a good idea. But I do believe you need one point of contact.
I feel like we already got burnt with the fire, realizing that we've spent thousands and thousands of dollars on these out-of-state trainings for someone that once they're gone, there is no follow-up. So now here we are going to reinvest that potential amount of money. And I say divvying up the responsibilities is probably a better investment for the county, whereas when you lose one person, the next person steps up. But it should come with compensation.
But I, I think going forward that you need to be more critical in training. They need to get certified first. Out-of-state training should not be allowed. I don't, you know, you guys set the tone.
That, well, no, we didn't because that was the prior board.
Whoever sets the tone, the one before that. We do not have a hazmat team here. There is no reason to get anybody hazmat certified because we do not have a hazmat team here. That's my personal opinion.
No, I agree with that.
So sending someone to all the hazmat classes would not be something that I would have recommended at all for Lincoln County, cause we're gonna call Salina, we're gonna keep the perimeter. That's all we're gonna do. So, you know, I think those trainings are nice and everything, but I wouldn't say that, you know, I'd like to go to the W I C conference in New Orleans and learn about nutrition aid from, at a big conference. But I'm not gonna go to New Orleans. I'm not gonna spend that county's money for that. And when I'm gone, none of that, like you say, none of that stays. Would it be nice? Yeah, but am I gonna do it? No. So I, I think you need to have some.
Well, and I wanna clarify, I'm not advocating that we don't have a quote-unquote emergency manager. I'm advocating that it's not a standalone forty-hour-a-week job. I'm sorry. If we know that other counties are making it work and they're larger than us with more of a budget, then really what are we doing putting our resources towards something like that where we've already discussed the waste that happened in the last era? And, and I'll repeat that this is a federally mandated, state-funded and then county obligated position that is questionable in its, uh.
I'm ju- I'm just saying that you need to get on it and get somebody hired or appointed. Because you're gonna lose out on that updating the plan. And like I said, you're not required to update the plan if you don't get E M P G money. Um, but it is a legal document. If something happens, you gotta go with what you got, so.
If we did have an incident, we could be liable for something without, without having the emergency manager. Heaven forbid that happened, but we need to at least appoint somebody here and then leave, like you say, Alexis and then have them be a point of contact and maybe then determine who has responsibilities for doing what.
Well, we had created a job description hoping that one of our part-time E M Ts would want to create him or herself a full-time position by doing that and that would be, they'd have the twenty-four hour shift plus make up the rest of the time doing whatever needs done. We haven't had that kind of interest as far as I'm aware. So we did relinquish that job description advertisement last week or the week.
Before, it's in the minutes, I think they said.
Okay, so we did quit advertising for that. We had left that up for six months or however long you've been doing this.
Since August.
Um, we, we had an inquiry from a current employee at the highway department. Maybe that ought to be where we start then.
Well, maybe it could be a point of contact.
Person works forty hours a week, here is available that, that work, you know, those working hours. If we have someone with interest.
But if you have him forty hours, how else you gonna?
You gotta cut his highway department time.
You gotta do that.
Or you're gonna have to pay overtime.
Yeah, that's, that's the issue there.
And then you just will have a full-time person if you're gonna pay overtime.
Well, not necessarily.
Every week.
Well, that was, we.
Well, you wouldn't have the flexibility to work forty hours at the highway department and go to meetings and go to training and get your certification and all that if you were full-time. You know, you can't do it all on the weekends. If you were full-time highway department, then part-time.
That's the one issue with him. Once we can figure out how to make it work.
Well, once you're credentialed, I mean, it's not, you, you can climb that ladder. There are plenty of classes to continue to take, which is what we saw happening in Vegas or wherever it was. But, um, there are also minimums that can be met within a certain timeframe to get everything organized. I mean, if we wanna appoint a, a contact person, they should start familiarizing themselves with this information for sure. And that will take some time.
We better do it pretty quick before the twenty-fourth of February.
Well, we would be sending someone to the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth, yeah. Yeah, a lot of the honest just give us the deadlines. Here we go, think about it.
I just, I just wonder where you're at.
I think we should move forward with that personally. If, if we want, well, I mean, we either change the position to be exempt. I mean, yes, exempt and do a salary where it, I don't care if that person spends an extra ten hours a week doing emergency manager stuff. They're, they're gonna get paid, but they get paid for their salary.
They'd have to be a combination, highway department, office manager and emergency manager.
I think you would need to contact Susan Lake and ask her whether or not that new role, because I don't think this highway department hours would be considered exempt. Well, we can call. And I also need to remind you, you have advertised for that position. So we would need to advertise.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we can still appoint that person if they want to be a contact person, at least temporarily. I mean, it is an appointment.
Well, we need to do something short order. I'm not against Caleb. I think he could be a pretty.
What I hear you saying is that you're not volunteering.
No.
And it was, and we've already put the duties on an in-house employee for the last six months, which you didn't really receive extra compensation, which I had suggested prior, but you did get to bill out from your department, which.
Which goes to my department, yeah.
Well, it subsidizes your department's budget.
Right.
So I'm, I'm hoping that we can return that subsidy here this, in this fiscal year. That's my intention.
Yeah. Well, I'm not against Caleb being appointed, but if we would, like, we'd have to advertise for the job and would be part-time emergency manager and part-time something else, which is what he, would he be?
Why can't you just apply for a part-time, I mean, put it out for a part-time emergency manager? So many hours a week and then if someone has another job, they'll work around it if you're flexible with hours and things, but.
Yeah, can't do that.
I guess I would see it if, if your department's gonna do the badging and the appraiser's office is gonna do the flood planning and, you know.
We haven't turned that W. We just sent Truett to it off a meeting.
But I'm saying hypothetically, if, if you can parcel out some of the obligations.
Well, we have.
You already have someone on payroll, why would you not internally appoint them to be the actual administrator of the information? I mean.
Well, we'd have to clear that with all these people we're planning on doing that with.
I think before you get too far, you guys need to get fifty-six, two dash two and sit down and figure out how much time it's gonna take to do each of the required things on there. That's, you know, do that, fifty-six, two dash two.
Yeah, well, you get Caleb.
Yeah, it's only two pages on there. You can pull it right up. You need to sit down and.
Well, there's a lot more. Yeah, I agree. I said there's no.
What's gonna be done. The bottom line here is we're supposed to provide for the safety and security of our people. And having somebody that doesn't know what he's doing, even though he's a good clerk, doesn't help you out when you're digging people out of a tornado.
Yeah.
But again, that person is not doing anything physical on the scene. That's where there's such a miscommunication and all of this public outcry.
I don't want him doing anything on scene. He's the. I don't want him doing anything on scene. He's the coordinator.
No, it's a chain of command, right.
Point of contact.
So what better person than someone who already has all the documents and files in front of them?
Exactly, that he has planned out and done exercise to make sure that it works.
Well, yeah, the exercise is.
One of the people. You have to have a county exercise at least every year for everyone of them.
Well, and if incident, incident can, command is at the lake, that's where, like the lake fire, incident command was there. They needed to be there.
That's right.
To, to do that.
Guy is not a commander. You'll have unseen commander.
Right, no, he's not. If you take incident command, he's not in command of anything. He shouldn't be in command of anything.
Exactly right.
But he's the go-to person that the commanders are gonna go to and say, I need five fire trucks.
That's right.
He's gonna find five fire trucks. I need so many more ambulances. I need this, I need that.
Or you got a tornado coming to Lincoln, where are the shelters? Well, let me go get my book. I'll have to unlock the door.
And I'll call Red Cross and tell them which one we need. And I, I mean, it, it's a lot of coordinating, yes.
Just bring fifty-six-two-two.
It's right here.
Figure out, well, you read what's required and see how much time you're gonna take.
I know, but some of these, I, I mean, the plans exist. That's what I'm trying to say. They all, nobody is reinventing the wheel, okay? The participation on the LEPC, we've already appointed our highway department director to do that, so we're paying the highway department wages.
What's he gonna do now?
He's not the emergency manager position on LE, OU.
No, I, I'm just making the point that we already have internally paid employees participating in this process that does comply and shows that we're utilizing that county money toward this effort. I mean, to, you're talking about hiring a whole.
You pay me to be there, too.
Right.
I know, but the emergency manager still has to be there.
But there's a difference between paying someone that that's their sole responsibility versus paying someone who already has inner structural relationships within the county and is on the payroll to do, to share in that responsibility, than to just have that be their sole responsibility.
Right, I understand that.
Jim, why would you like to just hire full-time EM, emergency manager, like David?
Looks like a full-time job to me. Running down that list of things you gotta do, figuring out all the stuff that it's gonna take.
I wish you would look at the time cards from the last year.
Those, just, all that tells me is the county commissioner didn't do their damn job and we've known that for years.
I would like to see it not be less than at least twenty hours, but.
Well, I think it'd be a, the learning curve up front would be a lot of learning.
Could, could we at least ask Mr. Habercorn to come and explain how he's managing two counties that quadruple our size? And, and let's see how other people are doing it, because Lincoln County's always lagging behind in the most efficient processes. So maybe we could use some advice from someone who seems to be handling it on a much greater scale. I don't see how Lincoln County can justify a full-time position if, I mean, Ellsworth City triples Lincoln City and the county as well. Then you have Russell that's what, ten times the size.
Well, and he's, 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 he's not gonna say it's two part-time jobs. He's gonna say it's two more than half-time jobs. I mean, when he has night meetings, he has night meetings in two different cities.
But I'm assuming that he's salary exempt.
I have no idea. I can't answer that question.
Yeah, we could invite him here next Tuesday afternoon. Is that what he was, we were talking about?
If you have the time that I can tell him. He has an exercise in the morning.
Well, we'll make time.
I think we should make time.
Yeah, I do too.
Whatever he can do, we can work around. Did, did you have specific hour slots for department heads? Or was it kinda like today where you just had?
Well, we had him slotted, but I don't, didn't we? I think I wrote him in, but I don't remember.
I don't have yours, but yes, you have him slotted in.
Stairs somewhere.
And you only did two departments, so next week is heavier.
Yeah.
Yeah. Than this week was. I mean, he probably could come the following week. I don't, I don't know what your intention are. The other thing about having part-time with two different roles is, you know, I wouldn't say that my role at the health department is something that I could just drop if an emergency came that was not public health. If it's just saying it was me, I'm just saying, you know. If I got forty people lined up for lab draws, I'm not gonna leave because there's a flood over in Barnard. Because I have nobody to replace me. So when you, when you have somebody with two jobs, you know, I know in other counties, it's the weed department guy. Well, you can.
To do what?
Is the half, the other half.
The part-time emergency manager.
Yes. So I suppose he probably can leave if there's an emergency. I think the weeds will be okay. And I could, you know, so you have to make sure that the other department has the flexibility to be gone.
So for example, Mr. Gableman, three of these requirements on this two-page document, jurisdiction provided, office space, transportation, and radio or pager or telephone communications. We have all those in.
Right next door.
Well, but I'm saying, but we also have those integrated into other departments as well. I mean, we actually stopped paying for a vehicle that was being used to travel back and forth to work just for that position. So, you know, there's already been some consolidation done by the, by the county.
I think you'll find he needs a vehicle. If I use the case maybe.
No, it just says you can, you can do, which I'm saying, in the highway department, we have vehicles to use. We don't need to pay insurance on a separate vehicle for the emergency manager position, and we have highway department pickups all throughout the county.
I know what you're saying. You've got Caleb in here, the emergency manager, so keep going.
Well, I'm, again.
Wasn't Caleb, you'd have to have a vehicle.
No, it says you can provide reimbursement.
If they're available, if the highway department director says, yeah, you could use my pickups.
Right now, it's up in Ash Grove looking at a coworker.
So.
There are three pickups at any given time for the highway department. Every outline shop has one and there are at least two, if not the third, available in Lincoln. I'm just saying, you, this is a two-page document with half of the things are just requirements as far as what has to be provided.
I think the highway department is under enough water that they can't swim. And I don't think that one of their employees has time personally, unless it's gonna be overtime or a salary of sixty thousand dollars again to work sixty hours a week or whatever. And it's more health insurance. It is, but you have somebody that's burnout all the time. And when they leave, you have somebody leaving sixty hours a week, now forty. Because they're burnt out and they've had enough.
I mean, one of these line items is just the county adopting the resolution yearly. One of these line items is just having a job description. One of these line items is just establishing. This KS, whatever, K A R, fifty-six-two-dash-two.
Dash two, dash two.
Sir, I have just read through the whole thing while we were talking.
You're reading a different one than I read then.
No.
I don't have mine here.
Right there, fifty-six-two-dash-two.
That's right. These are the, this is your requirement. These are the things that have to be done.
I read the whole thing.
And you don't see anything that requires anything more than a clerk, tans of the plum.
That is not what I said. You are misinterpreting what I presented. What I said is I don't see forty hours a week, right there. When, when, at least three to five of these things are just requirements of physical capacity. Another one is just the county, us, our board, adopting a resolution. This one says you have two years to get those first three levels accomplished on line classes. That the other, one line item is just participating in the LEPC, which we already pay, like I pointed out, two people to do so far. Establishing the program, I mean, I'm not trying to say there's nothing to do. I'm trying to say, how does Lincoln County justify a forty-hour-a-week position with a vehicle and everything else when other counties, not just Russell and Ellsworth, not, either, like she said, someone's noxious weed and that. Or out, out west, I met someone who was the EMS director and provided all the, everything established here for the county as the EMS director, which is where I got the idea that we could have an EMT doing this and taking a shift per week. This is the, this is what you gave Caleb to take.
That and I gave you the entire requirement.
So I miss hearing something that the highway department needs more help and blah, 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 and blah, 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 but we do have somebody who has time on their hands. I didn't think that was true. I mean, I'm not saying he's not capable. That's not what I'm trying to say at all. I'm just saying. I thought they were overloaded as it was.
Well, we talked to him this morning and he said he was somewhat interested. He's supposedly getting his office manager work done and caught up where he would have time to maybe pursue this. That's, he, he indicated that's what he would like to do now. I don't know if that's.
But he's getting his CDL so he can drive a truck when they're not busy. How many jobs is this boy gonna take on?
Why is that such a bad thing in this county? Why is everyone so negative about someone who has tenacity?
To work sixty hours a week?
No, to do whatever, whatever it takes.
They burn out. That's what I'm trying to tell you. I am tired of this crap because you burn out. I don't wanna work sixty hours a week. I don't wanna work any overtime, but I do work overtime.
In an emergency room that has shotgun wounds every day. But I'm saying people do. People do these things in real life. Lincoln County is not an isolated bubble where no one has to do.
If Don has to fix all their time cards because they can't get them right, that means they're not doing their job correctly. So that means he needs to be spending more time on that.
Know that. I wanna, I wanna know why you even know that.
Because that's probably what she's doing. I don't know if she is or she isn't. Is she?
I don't know.
Is he all caught up? Is all the filing done? Is everything caught up magically?
Tired of the attitude.
Tenacity. It's, it's the fact that you, uh, it's always do more with less, do more with less. You know, I had eight people in my department. Now I have four. I volunteer to do what I can do at capacity. But when they're in here every week saying they don't have enough help and now they're offering to do more stuff, what about they don't have enough help for? If he's got enough to do and he's getting his CDL, send him out to drive a truck. Why is he gonna be an emergency manager? The. I don't get it. How can you do ten things?
The issue, the issue that I had, uh, that, the only thing that I was told is they don't have enough help to do what I suggested, which was Monday through Thursday, Tuesday through Friday.
Sure they do.
Shifts, so that we didn't have to close on Fridays.
Why not?
There wouldn't be enough people working at the same time to have a whole four days of a full crew doing whatever.
Why does he need to work ten-hour days? Why can't he work eight-hour days and somebody answer the phone an hour in the morning and an hour at night?
Well, first of all, that's not your call.
It's not my call. He's an office manager. That's what he should be doing.
We're talking about you saying that they came in here saying they don't have enough help. The response to me was they don't have enough people to do what I suggested, which was Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, so that we don't have a day off in the highway department.
Says he has to work sixty hours a week and he's the only one that can work on Friday because Caleb goes home after a couple hours. So he's whining about sixty, seventy hours a week. And then his leave time is not the same as ours. Everybody gets the same benefits and I don't care how many hours you work. Why did, what, what does that make any sense? Now he's getting twenty-five percent less leave than everybody else. I just don't understand the complaints that come in that I see on the video and that they don't have time to do anything, but now they have time to do emergency management. I don't get it.
Well, that's not what has been portrayed. And it seems to me like there's a lot of compart, department comparison going on that is not legitimate, okay?
Okay, fine.
You don't have a two-and-a-half million dollar project going on every year. You don't have the same amount of responsibility to each single corner. You have a, a specific demographic that you're serving.
I do.
Okay, they don't. So you can't do the apples-to-oranges comparison and say.
No, I can't, but when they come in here and complain about things, that means they're complaining about things. So if he's not getting the same leave time as I am because he's, and he's working twenty more hours a week, he's also making twenty thousand dollars more a year than I am. So he should get the same benefits I get. You know, you're saying he's doing all this more work and he's not getting paid for it. Yes, he is. I'm doing less work and I'm getting paid less, but we all get the same benefits. But he's complained about that two or three times. I like the guy. I think he's doing great. I'm just saying, every time I hear a complaint, it's like, it's about them not getting enough. Well, and now they wanna take on more. Fine, pay him eighty thousand dollars a year to be the emergency manager. I don't care, just. Somebody needs to be appointed pretty soon. Or not. I don't care. I'm telling you what I'm willing to do and for how long I'm willing to do it. The Siren Project is almost done. I set up the March meeting for the storm thing.
Yes.
We have tier-two reports that have to come in. That's a legal obligation that has to be done through LEPC and emergency management. I will take care of that and I will take care of the badging, but much more than that, I'm done.
In the future, are you willing to do the badging in your department? Not any of the paperwork, just the badging? So that anytime someone needs it, your office hours or Monday through Friday, what did it say, eight-thirty? Okay.
I'm willing to do that.
Okay, so.
But there has to be an end point in this.
I agree.
Search.
I agree.
If that or indifferent.
I, I understand that. What are you suggesting? That we create a full-time job here?
Well, I'm suggesting that we need to take a look at it, put some pencil and paper down on things that have to be done. And then figure out what we wanna do. Right now, we're just guessing in the dark.
Well, we're not though, because I've given you specific examples of how we even have someone that can come and speak to us about.
I think we need to have.
We gotta have the information.
We wanna have that person speak to us, cause he'd be very knowledgeable.
In the meantime, I will see if I can get one of the other people who works for a different county who has multiple roles that includes emergency management to speak to us as well.
That's fine.
Okay.
And also, but we need to point someone that has a point of contact.
Right, which I would personally suggest, I would suggest the county employee who has come forward offering to do that. I, that's my personal suggestion. Whether that stays when you create a half-time position or whatever you're gonna do, I don't care. But I think if someone's willing to step forward and say they wanna take on more responsibility, I'm all for that. And I'm just.
For no extra pay?
It wasn't requested of pay, but I've, I've suggested to you.
Not any.
I have suggested to you that that should happen, have I not?
And I have asked and I have been told no, because we don't have the steps or the, the wage scale.
Where? Please, please.
Oh, I did ask. When I asked for, I did in executive session when I asked for Sherri Solter the first time and myself. And I was told no until we get this pay scale thing. And then I wasn't working that many overtime hours, so it didn't matter.
That was not said by me. In fact, I don't even remember that conversation.
Well.
I mean, I've said in public session.
You have, but again, it's something that's never gone forward. And I haven't asked. I'm not saying that I'm mad because I haven't got anything. But then, this is why the other departments get upset, is because we're sticking our neck out and haven't asked for anything. And then somebody else is gonna say, well, I'll do it and they'll get this huge raise. That happens all the time. So you guys gotta figure out, and, and I know it's equitable, not fair. I get it. I get it, but.
Okay, any further discussion on this issue? Maybe we should.
I don't have any, no. We need to get some.
We will speak to some.
By the twenty-sixth, we need to appoint.
Somebody needs to go to the meeting. Whether or not they get access to the computer program on the twenty-sixth or not, somebody at least needs to go to the meeting. But until you appoint somebody as an emergency manager, they're not gonna get access to the computer. That's what I'm telling them. They can't use the program.
You're going to go, so I moved to appoint.
What is that, that's February twenty-sixth? February twenty-sixth.
In Minneapolis, and I don't know the exact time.
Lincoln County Emergency Manager.
What was that? I'm sorry, again.
I, I moved to appoint him so that we can have an actual.
Emergency manager. Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Seconded then.
Okay.
So we have a motion made and seconded to appoint James Gableman, uh, emergency manager, all in favor of saying. Proton.
Well, that's gonna be implied, but you're going to the meeting as the appointee at this time.
Proton or what do you do?
All the emergency managers will be there from the area. The part-timers and the full-timers.
Part-time or temporary emergency manager. Okay, all in favor of saying hi?
Hi.
Hi. Motion carried, not opposed. And you're gonna go to this meeting. Then we will have these guys come next Tuesday, or one guy, like. And then we will have these guys come next Tuesday, or one guy, right, from, uh, Ellsworth.
I'll see, at what time?
Would you mind following up with it? Whatever he can do and try to.
Well, we could fit him in, schedule, if you could, Tuesday afternoon.
Okay, I will see what time he's done with his.
Because he'd be very knowledgeable about what he does and for two counties. And that, you know, he's doing it, so that'd be a lot of good information.
We, yeah, we can get some ideas on how he's.
And then we can go from there on whether, who we get, if we get part-time, full-time, whatever.
Sounds fair.
Okay? Well, it's a tricky issue.
I know it is. It's just gone on for a month and I think we need to.
Well, 'cause I've been with Alexis in a lot of ways because, uh, we wanna.
I'm not opposed to a part-time. I'm not.
No, I'm not saying you're.
As long as they can dedicate the time, part-time.
Yeah, I'm, no, I appreciate what you're doing, but we need, you know, uh, but I'm just talking about the future.
But just to have a figurehead who's, who's designated as part-time, you can't work any on it.
But there is. We need somebody to be responsible for doing this, so. And with Caleb, we're running him being full-time and then whether we do pay him overtime or does he have enough, do we wanna burn him out at sixty hours? You know, all that.
I don't know. I don't know.
I don't know. Maybe he isn't. He seems like he's very, uh.
Well, two thoughts. Number one, it's not gonna be an exempt position and I don't think that it could be, but you can confirm that with Susan Lane. Cause number one, I don't know what kinda salary you're thinking of, but there's a maximum salary that they have to be over as a full-time in order to be exempt. Cause if you remember, that's what the push was, was all anybody that's paid under a certain dollar amount is not going to be exempt and they have to, they qualify for overtime. So unless you're going to give him, I, I, I don't, that was like that thirty-eight thousand.
Yeah, I think it's five thousand more per year than what he's at now. Yeah.
So, um, e- and then you would still need to figure out the dual position. Because I think you're gonna find that you're not exempt, no matter what. And you'll be paying overtime regardless. No, I don't care if you pay overtime, but just so you know that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, we don't know. Right. Research it further, okay. Well, thank you, Madonna.
Sure.
But I guess we're, uh, reviewing more evaluations?
Well, he said he wanted to do the highway department without, so we can just do that if you'd like to go through some.
Well, it's like three fourteen, we go to what, four? Called good or what?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Madonna.
Like, we'll go to four and we'll review the evaluation. We need to be in executive session for this?
Yes.
I do have P V C, so don't forget that.
Oh, yeah, the P V C. Why don't we do that right now?
Sure.
Get it over with.
Well, you have to recess your meeting.
Okay, so we will recess the, this county commissioner meeting right now at three fourteen, whatever time it is. And then who, uh.
Reconvene as the Public Building Commission.
And must reconvene as a Public Building Commission. Anything else we need to say formally to?
Well, while we're in this meeting, just, um, have we had any, I have not had any personal contact. I forget her last name. Jean, the new administrator.
Jean, yeah.
Oh, Goji or something like that.
What is it?
Goji.
Goji.
Goji, yeah.
Um, has, has anyone spoken?
No, I have not.
Because I know, you know, they were waiting for the January thirty-first distribution, hoping that that was going to be sufficient, is that?
And I talked, I talked to one of the board members the other day and so far, so good with, but they may pay payroll like this this week, I think.
Okay.
He said, and, and nobody said anything, so I guess they're okay. I don't know.
Okay.
Till they come ask us or whatever. Next Tuesday, I guess, would be the meeting, remember?
Copies of the minutes, each, uh, is your, is, and then the two bills. And I think that Alexis is president of this meeting.
That's fine.
And. Normally, we just leave the, the members the same each year, so if I remember right, I think it was in August. Yeah, you guys appointed Jim as Secretary Treasurer and I think in January Randy was Vice President.
We probably need to change eleven February with the members present.
For what? No, that's right.
That's before you. That was last year.
Four nineteen, I think. Alright.
If you guys want to do this a different way, I, I lost my paperclip. That goes with that first check. I don't know what I just, oh, here it is. Um. It just seems silly to call a meeting to order to approve minutes.
You can do that if I.
Um, any corrections or additions to the minutes from August twelfth, two thousand nineteen?
Were they all over at the same time?
I moved to approve Mr. Gableman. Oh, okay, uh, yeah, we could, but I moved to approve Mr. Gableman as the Treasurer and Secretary. Um, we made a payment, seventy-two thousand and adjourned at five oh two, September third. Um.
I thought you were actually moving, sorry.
Oh, no, no, I, I was asking for additions or corrections, sorry.
Sorry.
Um.
Oh, I see.
We had the hospital board administrator in attendance talking about the consultant, uh, hiring due to the bond. Compliance, the agreement with the.
Uh, based on the audit, that was triggered the, uh, hiring a consultant. I'll make a motion to approve all three of these, or just the last one, all three.
All three.
All three of these.
All the two thousand nineteen.
All the two thousand nineteen minutes, which is February eleventh, August twelfth, and September third.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the three Lincoln County Public Building Commission minutes, meeting minutes. Any further discussion? Those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Do you even want to make the appointments for the current year? Believe them as they are?
Sure, I move to retain all positions for the Lincoln County P V C for the year two thousand twenty.
Second that.
Those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So then that means I signed the check.
Uh, Jim does, cause he's the treasurer.
Okay, okay. Oh, treasurer, okay. Um.
Several of them.
Uh, we need a motion for approval. We have two checks, one in the amount of three hundred and eighty-two thousand even. The other amount in one thousand two hundred and five and fifty-two cents, right?
These are the bonds, right? That kinda stuff.
Mm-hmm.
What is the bond and then what is that?
This is principal and interest, the thirty, three hundred and eighty-two thousand.
And the other one is that Shuckery and Bigamet with the annual reporting that's required with the pension.
Did we need a motion to sign that?
She made a motion.
Oh, I second, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I said we need a motion.
Well, I thought you made it.
No, I just said we, I'd.
I'll make a motion to sign both of these checks.
I'll second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, now we need to do an executive session. I, do you think, how much time? Maybe a half an hour? Or do you want more?
I don't care.
Okay, so we're gonna adjourn the P V C?
Oh, I'm sorry. I.
At three?
Yeah, I guess, we'll adjourn the P V C and then you can reconvene.
We'll reconvene the, uh, county commissioner meeting at three twenty or approximately. And what?
We have.
Review these. So now we wanna go into an executive session to review, uh.
Evaluation.
For how long? Half hour, forty minutes? Yeah, let's do.
Yeah, let's do forty.
Let's just go to four o'clock and we'll, which is forty minutes.
Are you just working?
Highway Department.
Okay.
Just the highway department employees.
Highway Department evaluation.
Cause I do have others if you need them.
Well, we can't do more than that. Do we just go through these and then if we have questions, we can talk to them at the next meeting?
Yeah, we may not even get done, cause there's a lot on there.
Huh, what's wrong with your computer? And after the executive session, are you reconvening to do any?
No, we don't have any more business, correct?
I don't think so.
I've got a couple things I was gonna mention.
Well, go ahead and do that now.
I'll mention them. Uh, personnel thinks John Paul will be on leave at the end of May and June and we've kinda got that covered with that.
Okay.
Uh, Jerry Philbrick, uh, has his assistant is leading going into the military in another couple weeks and I think we probably got that.
Are we gonna advertise? Do we need a motion to advertise the position?
I think.
I went ahead and posted it on the website, um, as a part-time.
Sure.
Okay.
And this isn't, it involves us, but it doesn't. Jennifer needs to have, uh, help upstairs, a clerk. But she hires and fires her own, so as long as she stays in her budget, we don't care. I just brought this up.
I thought there was just another transition of an employee there.
I don't know what she's doing. She just said that.
I thought, is Liz gone now?
Yeah, Liz is gone and she hired, uh, Sarah.
Sarah, contemporary last name.
So what do you mean? Do we need?
I'm just.
Do we need to establish her as employee or, cause she was working for the state?
Yeah, I think Jennifer was thinking she wanted to hire another employee for her. I'm just letting you know, so, so she can hire and fire.
Oh, well, yeah, she's already in for budget. We've already done the twenty-twenty budget.
Long she stays in. I have started doing the budget, uh, plan and guidance with all of the folks and I've talked to most of them already and re-written stuff up. We'll have some. Uh, Dan thinks he needs a helper out there with the spraying, because the other folks out there do not want anything to do with noxious chemicals, which is their right.
Does that mean in addition to the highway department or just to use the highway department again?
What, he just says he can't spray by himself. He needs somebody to help him spray.
You guys stopped the highway department when you split the per, the departments and the, you said the highway department wasn't gonna help with noxious weed anymore last year.
And the way things are gonna go.
Like he needs to advertise.
Probably. Uh, if they start driving the truck and some other stuff, Ray's gonna probably need some help over in the recycle thing.
I saw one individual downtown in Lush, talked to casually, I was looking for work, I said, an elderly guy said we may be, turn, talk to you, Don, about an application for helping Ray. He says they're still in the ad there, right?
Yeah.
No, because you guys had to hire James Miller to come.
Oh, that's right. We got James there.
But again, it's just something we need to look into one of these days. Uh, I've got some meetings I'm going to. The Regional Juvenile Detention Facility is this Wednesday and I'll go to that. The next one is on the eleventh of March and we host that.
Here.
What is?
The Regional Juvenile Detention Facility.
Oh, okay, so we should.
We hosted. So I'll make all arrangements, that's just information. Uh, K A C has a budget and finance class Friday the twenty-first that I had forgotten I was signed up for. So I'll be going Friday for that. And then K A C also has a human resources on Friday the sixth of March that I'll go to. And Pryor has a payroll law class on the twenty-third of March that I go to. And for your information, you were talking about S H R M. I am a member of that and I get a, every day I get a newsletter from them. When Sarah comes on board, I'll make her all that arrangement, uh, available to her. I'll give her my password. She can do whatever she needs to do, so we probably can make that work out.
Do we have an official acceptance there?
She, yes, she signed her letter of offers.
Okay, so we do have, we have hired each position.
Do we need to make official hiring of her or what?
Well, we need to.
I just feel like I will wait until I know she's physically here.
That's fine.
Cause you know, a lot can happen in the.
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, okay. Wait till you want to know.
Like they could give her the moon.
Anyway, I just, some notes I had of things I was going on. I thought I'd just bring those.
No, thanks, Jim.
And don't forget now, you're, you're February twenty-sixth.
I know, I got that in my calendar, so. Alright.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, Jim. And also, okay, we're gonna go back into executive session here for reviewing the highway department, uh.
Yeah, let's just continue with this since we already started and, okay.
Yeah. And we'll go for.
And we have a pay scale for this department. I, has anyone else turned in a pay scale?
Uh, no, uh, I've talked to them and I've got, uh, a couple of, uh.
Were they told they needed to? Cause I.
Yes, we asked all the department heads.
I, I talked to them. I talked to them.
Okay.
No, we asked them in the public session with the department head meeting that they were to turn in a pay scale so that we can start looking at.
But I, I've talked to them individually and told them what I want, kinda how I wanted and he gave us a pay scale, but that's, I need more than that. I need gradations in each of those.
Who? The highway department?
Yeah.
It's here. I.
Yeah, but he doesn't say, these are the things that make you a three and you come for, you need to do these things. We've got to have that.
Oh.
More of a definition, each grade.
But let me say, the starting out where we are right now, it's because of where they are in their own pay. Okay, so yeah, I see what you're saying.
I understand. I understand.
If you qualify for X, Y, and Z, that's how you bump up to the next level.
But we gotta take it from a subjective thing to an objective thing and it's gotta be very specific.
I understand.
And I've explained that to everybody, except the current human resources person. I didn't tell her that.
No, I haven't been told.
Okay.
And, uh.
I haven't done my evaluation either. I, or I would've filled in your blank, but it's, it's.
Let's just get this one done. There, the other departments are smaller, so.
Let's do it.
Okay. So we will.
And Tammy hasn't responded at all to my pay scale response.
One person?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, uh, I guess we were in the middle of the motion here. I forgot what.
Oh, no, I'll do it. I moved to recess into executive session for forty minutes to, um. Look at the highway department evaluations pursuant to K S A seventy-five forty-three nineteen to be number one, personnel matters of non-elected personnel with the commission to reconvene in the commission room.
Is present for this to commission?
I think so, because we already have our.
And how long? Forty minutes?
Yes.
Well, until four o'clock.
I second the motion.
We've had a motion made and seconded to, um.
Well, I, I better amend the motion then if you wanna do four, thirty.
Well, we could go four, we go forty minutes.
Okay, five minutes over.
Okay.
Oh, it's fine.
Okay.
Motion's been made second to move to recess into executive session for forty minutes to, uh, review highway department, uh, evaluations. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.